Board member Bowman has requested a moment of silence. Ms. Bowman?
Thank you, Chair. This is a moment of silence for Jonathan Alvarez. Jonathan loved going to school and rarely missed a day. He liked to draw, play catch at recess, and spend time with his classmates. He entertained his family and friends with his playfulness and loved swimming and basketball. Jonathan will be greatly missed by the entire Sheridan Park family.
Thank you. May the Chair have a mo— oh, sorry. The superintendent has released the agenda with certain changes for this meeting and published it on the school district's website. The Chair finds pursuant to Section 120.525 Florida statute that good cause exists for such changes and accepts the revised agenda. May the Chair have a motion in a second to close the agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Zeeman, seconded by Mrs. Alhadev. All in favor of closing the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. The agenda is now closed. May the Chair have a motion in a second to approve the minutes for the following meetings. June 17, 2025, special meeting expulsions. June 17, 2025, regular school board meeting. June 24, special school board meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Zeeman, seconded by Mrs. Alhadev. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes as listed say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The minutes are approved unanimously. As we prepare to begin our regular school board meeting, we are reminded that our vision is 100% proficiency for all our students as an A rated for the second time. School district, our vital task is to sustain this achievement. We will continue educating all students to reach their highest potential. Our theme this year is Believe &amp; Power: Achieve One Broward. The Chief of Staff and Communications Officer polled the board for any agenda items they wish to address in advance of the meeting. The following consent items have been identified for discussion. H2, H3, A3, C1, C2, F3, J2, O3, O4, O5, O6. At this time, may the Chair have a motion in a second to pass the consent items that have not been pulled for discussion, which include H1, A1, A2, F1, F2, J1, O1, and O2.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
We do have a public comment poll for H1.
Okay, that'll be...
Nana Lynch Walsh.
That's after we move. I'm gonna ask that after we take the move in the second. So, Dr. Zeeman?
So moved.
Seconded by Mrs. Alhadev. Are there any registered speakers on the items that have not been pulled for discussion?
Just the one I mentioned, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Lynch Walsh?
Good morning. Dr. Natalie Lynch Walsh, Plantation, Florida. I see that there's been a second revision to H1, which suggests that then you won't be discussing the thing that I was here to talk about, but I hope the underlying problem associated with the reason that that name was struck will be addressed. You have too many messy job descriptions, and you shouldn't be putting people into a position when the position hasn't been revised since 2007, and yet the Systems Analyst 4 just got revised back in June of this year. So please have your superintendent direct his staff to look at all the Systems Analyst positions, because 1, 2, and 3 haven't been touched since— for about 18 years. And it's in safety. So safety and technology are two things, I think, that change quickly around here, but haven't been looked at holistically. Needless to say, there were some shenanigans, but it looks like it's been stopped, at least for today, but this shouldn't sneak right back onto the next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the consent agenda items that have not been pulled for discussion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Those items passed unanimously. And just as a note, I believe Mrs. Rupert and Mrs. Leonardo are on the line?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. So we're gonna— H1 Agenda Item: Recognition of Personnel Appointments. The Chair would like to take a moment to recognize new staff appointments. We would like to congratulate each of you for your career advancement with Broward County Public Schools. We value you and your families. If we could give the appointees a round of applause. Thank you. Dr. Hepburn, can you please share a few remarks and introduce the new leaders?
Yes, we have quite a few new leaders. Welcome to the BCPS team. Most of you are actually being promoted, so proud of the work that you've done thus far for our students and looking forward to supporting you and all the great things we're gonna accomplish in the future. And then at this time, we're gonna turn it over to Mr. Sullivans, because I don't know how we're gonna take a picture with— with all of these wonderful appointees today. Congratulations again. And then, Mr. Sullivans, however you want us to align ourselves to take a board photo.
Yes, at this time, we will now recess this regular school board meeting for a board photo with new staff appointments. This regular school board meeting is now reconvened. Do any of my colleagues have any remarks for the items that were not pulled for discussion? I would just like to take the opportunity to say congratulations to all the retirees that are on item H1. Thank you for all that you've done for the district, and we wish you a great new journey, new chapter in your lives. At this time, may the Chair have a motion in a second on item H2.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Dr. Zeeman. Are there any registered speakers for item H2?
Yes, ma'am. Delvin King.
I don't see him.
And again, I'll say Delvin King, just in case it's allowed. Delvin King.
Okay. No other public speakers? So we'll move to board discussion. Mr. Severa?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In reviewing this, I've identified some individuals that I had some questions regarding the actual discipline that's being proposed. In my opinion, it's too lax, and I was just wondering if I could get some clarification. So I'm gonna try to take this in order. Looking at the chart, on the bottom of Page 1 is an individual by the name of Nazar Daya Libby, who has had five prior disciplinary actions in the last five years, and yet this most recent request is only a three-day suspension for insubordination relating to attendance, which appears to be a recurring theme for this individual since 2020. I'm wondering why it was deemed appropriate to only levy a three-day suspension.
Dr. Hepburn?
Go ahead, Mr. Azarito.
Good morning. David Azarito, Executive Director of Professional Practices and Labor. Mr. Severa, yes, you're correct. So there are several incidents of absenteeism. They've only resulted in written reprimands to this point, so this is the first time this individual's being suspended. So not saying back in '24, '02, probably should have had a suspension at that point, but this will be the first time for suspension for this individual. So going forward, it would be progressive if it stays. If the absenteeism issues remain, it'd be a five-day, 10-day ongoing from here.
So for this level of offense, when you're actually talking about lobbying, excuse me, or levying—I can get my words out this morning—levying suspensions, the first step, if you will, would be the three-day which this individual's receiving?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. My next Madam Chair, if I may. The top of Page 3 of the report, this gentleman is Ruben Gonzalez. Again, five prior disciplinary actions stemming from, I believe, 2018, 2018, 2022, 2022, 2025, and I apologize, I believe there's one in 2017 as well. Seems to be a habitual violator of Rule 9. Don't know the exact specifics of Rule 9, but this gentleman does not appear to want to comply with it for whatever reason. Once again, noticing that the suspension is only two days for a violation of a rule that has been broken, at least, I guess this is the fifth time now. Why only two days?
So in the bus drivers and bus attendants, they have a— they have a Rules and Penalty Handbook that's specifically for them in FOPI. So it's listed very specifically, first offense, second offense, third offense. There's also a sunshine rule in there, or sunset. So after a year, it kind of reverts back to Step 1. So even though in 2018, '25, that was—it—that would have been considered his first violation of Rule 9, which is a preventable accident, he received a meeting summary, MS. So now this is the second offense within the year. That's why it's a two-day suspension.
Well, this gentleman violated Rule 9, which is identified as a preventable accident, which is scary, in my opinion, for a bus driver. Once in 2022, once in 2023, in February of this year, and now again. So this is what, four violations of a preventable accident? How many accidents do we need to let this gentleman be involved in before we take appropriate measures? I don't think a two-day suspension is adequate, and respectfully, if my kid was on that bus, I wouldn't want somebody who violated Rule 9 five times only having a two-day suspension. I'd probably want him fired.
So Mr. Azarito and I kind of share some of these same sentiments, and that's why one of the things we're doing this—this year through negotiations is to really look at the rules and penalties that are currently in transportation. Because there's some rules and penalties, we probably need to update and revise to bring more into line with the appropriate discipline for certain offenses.
So are we bound by some CBA or some agreement that the bus drivers have that we actually can't do anything worse than lodge a two-day suspension for someone who gets into five accidents in the span of three years? Correct. Okay. Wish I would have been a part of that negotiation, but I guess we'll save that for another day. The next individual I have here is on Page 5 of 8. And this is Nichelle Perro. So here's one with 11 prior disciplinary actions, and she's only up now for a week suspension. Why are we not terminating an individual like this who has this many disciplinary actions for behavior and performance issues? I count it 11. Check my math if you need to, but I count it 11, and now she's only getting a week suspension.
Correct. Some of the same answers here. So a little—little different here, even though her violation was for one rule, Rule 8, the first offense is probably gonna be a lower suspension, but since she has all of that prior disciplines on there, that's why the progressive discipline is listed as a seven-day suspension. So for Rule 8, first offense, it's gonna be less than a seven-day, but because of the past history, we moved it up to a seven-day suspension.
And I assume this is the— the harshest penalty that we can levy in this situation pursuant to the CBA that the bus drivers share with the district?
It may not be the harshest, but that's what the—between the Transportation Department and the union representative, that's what we came up with, a seven-day suspension.
Okay. Do you think that's adequate?
Based on—yes, based on where we are right at this point. If you look at her prior disciplines, she had a one-day suspension back in 18 and a five-day, but since then, there's been some violations, but she's only received reprimands and meeting summaries. So at this point, first offense of Rule 8, after a year, seven-day suspension would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you for that. My last one, Madam Chair, if I may. Erica Washington, on Page—bottom of Page 6, which bleeds into Page 7 of the report. This individual, on my tally, has 14 priors and is now facing a whopping one-day suspension for the latest violation of her attendance and performance concerns. I'll again ask you to elaborate on why we believe that's adequate, and I'll ask again whether or not we are bound by some provision in whatever CBA we have with the bus drivers, and if this is the harshest penalty that we can lodge at this point.
Correct. So again, so if you look on the previous—from '22, '922 on, or just been verbal reprimands and meeting summaries, we are looking at getting more progressive with our discipline with the Transportation Department. We've already had several meetings set up with them and talked to them about not just the rules and penalties that are part of the language, but when it does come down to incidents like this, attendance that's not in the rules and penalties, this falls under regular 4.9 action. So again, so all those verbal reprimands, written reprimands, so this would be, again, so looking at over a year of staying—you know, not having any violations within the last year, a one-day suspension for ongoing attendance. So if this progresses, it would then go to 3, 5, 10, and so on.
Well, let me ask you, because according to the meeting summary, on June 6 of 2022, I believe it was, this individual received a three-day suspension. So three years ago, we thought this was important enough to lodge more stringent discipline than we're lodging now after several violations have occurred since?
Well, the other violations after the '66, '22 were not attendance violations. So in the last three years, attendance has been better. Now it's starting to fall off a little bit, so they're gonna go back to a progressive discipline model.
So is it—is it—is it our position that the suspensions are in line with the specific violation? So for instance, if I'm late for work six times and I receive a suspension, and then I start showing up on time, but maybe my new violation is I just start hitting mailboxes with the school bus? Okay? And I have a couple of preventable accidents, because I just love hitting mailboxes with the school bus. So if I'm gonna be suspended for those preventable accidents, are we not taking into consideration the prior rule violations because they're of a different nature?
In their contract, their discipline resets after a year on the rules and penalties. So the preventable accidents, that's different than the attendance. The rules and penalties work on the—hitting the mailboxes, and that's progressive and that changes every year, that resets. The attendance is on the 4.9 side, and that's where we go the progressive. So her attendance has improved over three years, so now she's starting to have some issues, so that's what we're gonna start to work on progressively to get her showing up.
When does the CBA terminate?
We negotiate every year. They're usually two-year—two-year contracts, but we negotiate every year.
The current version that we're operating under, when does it terminate?
Do we have it under FOPI? It's either '26 or '27, when we just renewed it.
If we can, if we need to talk offline, that's fine, but I'd like to know a definitive answer to that, if I may.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Zeeman?
Thanks so much, Chair. To follow on to school board member Severa's just general comments, I think it'd be interesting for this board to think a little bit about having some work done and presented at a workshop that summarizes kind of the highlights of collective bargaining agreements. We get them, and we get them with very little time. They're usually wrapped up in salary negotiations and other kind of major issues that we want from our collective bargaining units, but it would kind of be, I think, valuable as a board to see what's in our collective bargaining agreements and actually talk about it at a workshop, so we can have a good discussion about things like progressive discipline, like what's in 4.9 and what's not. How do you count things, you know, so that it makes sense? These have been around for decades, and they don't get kind of, in my mind, the sufficient review they should, so that when we go back to a collective bargaining unit, we can say, "Look, there's three things we would like to talk to you about this year changing." At the same time, we're talking about initial salaries, pay raises, other work conditions and the like. They all go together. This is not gonna be a great year for pay raises, as virtually everybody in the world knows. Public education funding is in a tailspin, but at the same time, I would prefer, as a workshop chair, to think about bringing maybe one or two at a time, so we can really get the top five or 10 things that are in collective bargaining agreements that influence our ability to achieve our strategic goals, and just have a conversation about it as a board. We have to do it publicly, so it's—you know, I know—I know people would prefer to be able to negotiate one at a time, but that's not legal. So we have to talk about it as a board. If we did talk about the collective bargaining agreements, I think we might give some direction to the superintendent about some things that we have seen that are preventing us from achieving our strategic goals. Then the negotiating team can take those ideas and start to negotiate with the unions. Right now, that—that trigger from the board doesn't happen. What we get is the superintendent gives direction to the negotiators, they can negotiate. In general, in my three years here, I haven't seen any changes to collective bargaining agreements. It's all been about salaries, and—and it might be time that we mature a little bit and start talking about those first, give some direction to the superintendent, and then just see what the negotiating team might bring back.
So I do believe 4.9 is slated to come to a workshop, but Dr. Hepburn, can you address that?
Yes, 4.9 to be coming to a workshop. Team is working with the different applicable unions or collective bargaining units to collaborate on what 4.9 is gonna look like. In addition to what Dr. Zeeman and Mrs. Severa just talked about, we have the same concerns, right? So the team, we're already kind of looking at some collective bargaining agreements to—to update, to get to modern times, right? Like I say, some of them have been around for decades and haven't changed much over time, and we're reviewing those to see how they're applicable to our student needs, our community needs, our school needs. So it's a work in progress, but absolutely, we're working on that, and that—that's actually a great idea to kind of bring that to a workshop, and it's an education for everybody also, at the same time, just to understand what's actually in those collective bargaining agreements.
Madam Chair? Just wanted to add that when you bring—you can bring something to a workshop and have a general discussion, but if you want to ask the superintendent to open certain items, certain articles from the collective bargaining agreement to negotiate, you can do that request and direction during a closed door for negotiation.
That'd be wonderful. Just to finish up, Chair, thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Dr. Hepburn, for agreeing to do that. I think it'll be interesting for the board to give some thoughts and ideas about what elements in the collective bargaining agreements, from the board's perspective, might make sense to talk to the union about, and then separately to the General Counsel. Obviously, when we're—when we're done talking about it, it would be valuable a month or two ahead of the negotiations to have a closed door, and possibly, we could do about all of them at once. If we tee up the workshops and get into them, then maybe a single closed door to kind of give the superintendent direction about where we'd like to see it. All this is gonna be dirty. This is not—it's not like, you know, voting on a contract and say, "Let's go spend X dollars to get Y outcomes." This is gonna be just direction to the superintendent through his staff to say, "Hey, go talk to them about these things." And Mr. Severa brings up some very good points about progressive discipline, but there are other things in our collective bargaining agreement that just stop us cold sometimes when we're trying to get something done, and most of those that I run into, Mr. Superintendent, are just vestiges of our past. You know, "We used to do it this way," but that's not good enough. Our goals are real goals, and we need to do whatever we can to achieve them. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Alhadev?
Thank you. So my question is, does the superintendent have the authority to add additional discipline onto what was proposed today?
Dr. Hepburn?
In many cases, no. We have to abide by the collective bargaining agreements. That's the—that's the plain and simple answer. In most cases, if there's a robust collective bargaining agreement, we can't go beyond what's in there unless it's something that is—violates the law.
So Mr. Severa brought up about three to four actions that are gonna take place today, and in the past, the board has asked the superintendent to pull certain people to take another look at what is proposed today. So are we not allowed to do that?
Dr. Hepburn?
Axum.
Or Ms. Batista?
The T said away in an hour.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So for those items that in the past you—the board has asked the superintendent to go back, they're employees in a different collective bargaining unit. The transportation unit is—is very regimented in the way that they have their penalties, you know, set out as to what can be levied, as to which offense that happens. So you would not be able to do that in this instance.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, oh, yes.
To answer Mr. Severa's question, the FOPI 4 contract, which includes transportation and June 30, 2026, at the end of the school year.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of approving item H2, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion carries unanimously. I have a motion in a second for item H3.
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Zeeman, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Any public comment on H3?
No, ma'am.
Mrs. Alhadev?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion on Page 2 of the job description, the last bullet point. It speaks to emergency communications, and it has examples like two-way radios, intercoms, and emergency broadcast systems. I would like to add to that panic buttons.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to add—can you just say that again? Where are we adding it?
Page 2 of the job description, the last bullet point. In the parentheses, it gives examples. I'd like to add panic buttons as those examples, the bottom of the page.
Okay, I see it. It's been moved by Mrs. Alhadev, seconded by— It's been moved by Mrs. Alhada, seconded by Dr. Seaman. Any public comment? Any board member discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Back to item H3. Any board discussion, any other board discussion on H3? All those in favor of H3 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries as amended. Next item is item A3. Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Seaman, seconded by Mrs. Alhada. Any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Dr. Seaman.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I'm curious about, I mean, I'm not picking any one university out over the others, but I am curious about the agreements here. We get them, in this case, they renew every five years. What we didn't get is what changes kind of happened between five years ago and today. Can you tell me what the changes have been from the previous agreement to this agreement?
Dr. Hepburn.
All right, Dr. Cohen, if you can weigh in. I don't think there's any substantial changes between this agreement and that one, but go ahead, Dr. Cohen.
Good morning, Dr. Fabian Cohen, Chief Academic Officer. There have been no substantive changes at all to the affiliation agreements.
Terrific, thank you very much. Second question that I have, Chair, is what strategies and metrics are established to ensure that the increase in student-teacher and field experience placements will lead to the 25% growth in teacher recruitment and a sustained reduction in instructional vacancies by July of next year, 2026?
Dr. Hepburn.
Can you repeat that question, just to make sure we heard it clearly?
Sure. What are the strategies and metrics that are established to ensure? The reason we have interns come work in our schools ostensibly and in a very clear way, which is so laudable, I mean, there's a real M in this SMART goal. There's a measurable outcome, right? And the measurable outcome is a 25% growth in teacher recruitment and a sustained reduction, no number associated with it, but a sustained reduction in vacancies by July of 2026. So, what we're arguing is, let's let interns from Broward College and FAU and Miami and FIU and Florida and Florida State and everywhere else come work here. We're going to spend some time investing in them, supervising them, giving them experience. They're showing us kind of what their innate skills are teaching. So, I think everybody in the public would agree, "Hey, this is great. There's your future teacher corps," right? But are we measuring it? Do we have strategies and metrics to ensure that we actually are getting to that 25% growth in teacher recruitment and a sustained reduction in vacancies?
I'd say the short answer is yes. We, most of those interns are actually hired by us, and it helps us to maintain a 2% or lower vacancy rate when it comes to instructional personnel in the district over the past couple of years.
Are we measuring the growth in teacher recruitment, and are we finding out whether or not we're achieving the 25%?
That, we are measuring the growth, not just for interns, but we also have a lot of second-career educators that come and work and teach for us, because the candidates coming out of traditional teacher colleges from universities and colleges has declined significantly over the past five years. So, we have very few candidates that we're actually hiring from traditional teacher colleges, from universities and colleges. Most of our actual candidates are actually second-career educators who were in some other career before, and now they're deciding to be an educator in our system.
I think your answer is instructive, pardon the pun, but it's instructive in the sense that interns are, represent kind of the classic model of education majors, come do their internship, take their certification while they're in college, go out on the market and apply, right? So, that's the 25% increase in applicants maybe that we're looking for out of the intern program. That is a declining share of our teachers, though, right?
Correct.
When Mr. Holness was working in a school, almost everyone that was hired there as a teacher was an education major that came to the school.
Correct.
And now, roughly 50%, if I'm right, are coming out of accounting careers, finance careers, biologist careers, and joining us as teachers. I'm just pointing out that if we're going to establish like really cool goals like this, we ought to try and figure out if we're reaching those goals or not. Otherwise, we're just going to get agreements like this, and as a board, we're not informed as to whether or not that goal's being achieved, and so then we're kind of are stuck, like, "Do we really need to do this again?" But in this case, it makes sense because the composition of who's becoming a teacher is changing so rapidly.
It's totally different.
Is it roughly 50% or am I making a bad number?
I'm not sure about the specific number, but I can tell you, the colleges of Ed, they do not produce a lot of educators coming out with their bachelor's degree. People are majoring in other fields. We depend on many of our educators coming from other careers or also other school districts that were already teachers.
Do you have a rough estimate of other career?
I can't give you a rough estimate, but we can give you some numbers.
I went to new teacher orientation last year, and I was shocked at, I'm trying to say this politically correct, at the experience that there was in the audience. There were a lot of people who appeared that they had worked 10 or 20 or 30 years and were coming to us as brand-new teachers. And so, I talked to a handful of them, and they were accountants, biologists, finance majors, economists, all kinds of folks who had decided they wanted to give back. And one great way to give back, obviously, is to get certified as a teacher and come work for Broward County Schools. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of item A3, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is C1. Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Seaman, seconded by Mrs. Alhada. Any public comment on C1?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Thompson.
Just a second, please. I'm never first, so let's, no, I appreciate it. So, my questions were primarily around the pregnant and parenting teen section, and it seems like a lot of the focus is to direct them to these alternative centers. And I would like to better understand the process we have for when a teen gets pregnant, because a lot of, also, in this section discusses that they might have a different approach to their learning when a lot of times, pregnant and parenting teens just need the same support of our regular students. So, I just want to have a better understanding for myself and my colleagues about how we are treating our pregnant and parenting teens.
Dr. Hepburn.
Go ahead, Dr. Tumer.
Good morning, Ted Tumer, Center Region Superintendent. And care for our pregnant teens, obviously, we value their educational experience and also their agency just as an individual dealing with something that's perhaps unplanned and a little difficult at the time. But we create caring, loving environments for them, especially at Segal in particular, to make sure that they're getting wraparound support, their mommy-and-me classes for the parents there, to make sure that they're parenting and learning all the things that they need to know to be effective parents while keeping them on their academic track. So, it's not seen as a way to put them away, it's a way to set them up for success despite the circumstance for future opportunities.
So, I appreciate that. However, what if I'm a student at West Broward, and I find out I'm pregnant and I want to stay at West Broward?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so what are the supports that we're giving them at their home school?
I would say similar supports. I mean, it's not as intensive as it is at our center school, but they're still getting what they need in order to achieve academically, and there are supports there to support them with any concerns they have as well.
So, they still get access to full-time childcare?
At our traditional schools, that's not something that's offered at all other schools, but obviously, that is at the center school.
So, if I was a Western student, West Broward has obviously a daycare center for older kids, but would I be able to transfer there and put my kid into a free daycare program?
My understanding is you would. You'd need to provide your own transportation there, but providing space, I don't think that would be an issue.
Dr. Hepburn, did you want to? I don't think those, the childcare centers at the schools are not free.
It's not free.
Those are...
But in the plan, it says full-time childcare is offered at no cost to our students slash parents.
At the center.
At the center site.
Yes, that's what I was trying to get clarification on.
At the, like, West Broward's daycare, that's for a fee.
Yep. Those are fee-based programs.
I understand that, and I know it's not daycare. I'm just trying to understand and make sure that we are treating our pregnant and parenting teens the same way regardless on what school they go to. And in this plan, it says they're provided free full-time care, so I'm just clarifying where that's available. Thank you. And then, are they still eligible for wraparound services if they are at any of our high schools?
My understanding is they get the services provided to most students, but not the same as at the center, so I want to be clear about that.
All right, so if I want to stay at my home school, do I still have access to the mommy-and-me or daddy-and-me parenting classes?
Only if they're provided at traditional schools, and I'm not sure that they are.
Would there be transportation provided for them to attend those classes from their home school?
If they're enrolled at Segal, to use that example, then yes, they would get transportation.
So, only if they're enrolled in the classes that offer it?
Only if they're enrolled at the center school that offers it, yes.
So, I think there needs to be some clarification in this plan then, because it says Broward County Schools' transportation is available to our parents, students, and their children to these services. And if that's not accurate, because it's not available unless they go to center school, I just think that's a little misleading. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to make a motion?
Sure, it's early, and I was first. I would like, well, I guess I would like feedback from staff, because if I'm misreading this and this only addresses Charles Drew and Segal and the one other one that I can't scroll right now, but I just want to ensure that, one, we're supporting our kids staying at their home schools, because a lot of times, that's where their support is, that's where they live near. But is that, is my understanding correct then, that this plan is for all our pregnant parenting students, or is this plan only for the centers?
Dr. Hepburn.
Dr. Tumer.
I'm not sure with this, because this is not my item, so I would defer to whose item it is.
I lost my computer. Hold on, just a sec.
Yeah, so the plan is for the district, and as the district, we provide those services at those sites. We probably can be more specific in our wording to better state what actually happens.
I don't know how to make a motion to do that, but if we, so if we are providing transportation, like if I go to West Broward, there's mommy-and-me classes at Segal, if we do provide that transportation, then I think that needs to be clarified. If we don't, then I think the district needs to come up with a way to support our pregnant and parenting students that want to stay at their home schools, because in reality, that's typically what is best for pregnant and parenting students, is that they stay in their home community. So, I guess I just, I don't...
Can you be more clear about what kind of support you're envisioning at their home school?
Well, so if they go to these center schools, they have wraparound services, they have access to mommy-and-me classes, it sounds like they have access to free childcare. I understand that free childcare does not seem like that's on the table, so that needs to be clearly written in the services provided if this is a district-wide document. However, wraparound services could be access to helping them sign up for TANF or for SNAP benefits. It could be access to signing up to Head Start programs, if they're still around. It could be access to mommy-and-me support groups. It could be a variety of things. But in this document, it sounds like these services are only available if you are forced to go to these centers. And I just want clarification on if our students can access these services regardless on whether they choose to go to a center or not.
I think one of the difficulties, because we don't have many pregnant teens, when you look at the landscape of the district, you probably have one at a high school or one at 10 different high schools. To spread the services out for one kid at 10 different schools, that's the difficulties of the logistics to address the needs of the kids, for the personnel to have the expertise to do it. And that's why the alternate site or the specific site provides better services for students that want to take advantage of the whole approach of the services that they can take advantage of at the center school. For some of the things you listed, signing up for SNAP, signing up for head care, those things, yeah, that can be accomplished at a high school, but for those specific parental skills, while the student is currently pregnant, I think those are some of the difficulties in where we're spreading a person or too thin if they're trying to address the needs of one or two particular students at several high schools.
Well, I understand that. I think that still needs to be made clear in the document then, that the certain services are only available if they go to these centers.
So, is that what you...
Yes, that would be my motion.
Second.
So, it's been moved and seconded to change the wording in the document to say those services are provided at specific centers. Is there any public comment on the motion?
Good morning, Dr. Natalie Lynch Walsh, Plantation, Florida. I support what Ms. Thompson is trying to do. I'm not, it sounds like we're going to have to find funding elsewhere, but I was also a little surprised to hear that there was only one pregnant teen per school, because that was like the statistic when I was a teen. So, are they just dropping out, or are they all going to the centers?
No, pregnancies are way down.
I, that seems a little unbelievable, but maybe they're just not doing anything anymore. But anyway, I support it, but I don't know how they're going to fund it.
Thank you. Well, just to clarify, the motion is just to change the wording in the document to say that those services are only provided at center schools?
Yes, totally support any measure to try to get more clarity out of written things from staff, absolutely.
Okay, great. Any other public comment? Board member discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Do you have anything else? Okay, Mrs. Rupert.
Thank you. I'm actually asking about, I sent it ahead of time for, hold on, trying to pull it up here. How did, C1, how did you decide on what increases our goals will be moving forward? And then, I had a second question, so I'll wait for the answer. I looked to see if it came in email, and I couldn't find it. So, how did you decide on what increases our goals will be moving forward?
Dr. Hepburn.
Dr. Lozano.
Vladimir Alvarez, Assistant Director, EO, and ADA Compliance. Actually, my department is in charge of putting this plan together, and the goals may be set by the district, really, whatever we get from the plan is basically the information that the state is requesting, and the goals mainly, they stay the same. The goal is that we show that we're improving not only participation in the academics, but participation in sports.
Thank you for that. So, I guess basically, the district sets the goals, and is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, we set the goals, and if we are not in compliance, we need some improvement and increased participation. We have the monitoring forms, monitoring plans that we review every year in order to show improvement.
Gotcha. And we certainly have been showing improvement. I would like to see more in some of our subgroups, but we have been showing some on there. But I just thought, you know, the board really needs to weigh in on these, and perhaps a workshop about that process, because it just comes down to how well are we educating our students, and especially from, you know, top to bottom, that everybody's getting a very fair education. So, I think that, you know, some of these goals were a little on the minimal side, and I think that we need to be asking more, especially with our... So I think that, you know, some of these goals were a little on the minimal side, and I think that we need to be asking more, especially with our ELL and our ESE students. So I do appreciate that, but I think that the school board itself needs to have a conversation about this. As, you know, let's do a little bit more stretching goals, instead of just kind of hitting that 3% or so that we want to increase. Thank you for that. And the second question I have is concerning gender sports equity. Excuse me. I would like to know what specific plan to increase participation and teams for girls moving forward. Looking not for a pat answer, which is what I felt that we received, but a specific plan moving forward. Additionally, how did Play Like a Girl events aid in this endeavor? What has worked and what will be new this coming year? So those are my questions when it comes to gender sports equity. And for someone that's been on the board for a while, I do have some perennial high schools that are really not meeting those goals year after year. So something really needs to be done to address this. And I'm not into the pat answer, that we're going to do this, we're going to try that, when I know that we've been doing those same accommodations moving forward. So I think, once again, we need to really look at these goals and make sure, you know, how did Play Like a Girl work out? So maybe that would be Madam Chair, through the superintendent. You know, who's Patty Brown, maybe she might be able to have that answer.
Yes, thank you for the question, Ms. Rupert. So I have Dr. Wanza and Ms. Brown kind of enlightened us about what were past strategies and what are new things as we roll into the school year. And also, they can give you an update on the Play Like a Girl event. Very awesome event, and she can give you some highlights about that, and how that addresses some of our needs when it comes to our female athletes.
Great, thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Hepburn. Valerie Wanza, by the way, Happy New Year, because it is a new academic year. Happy New Year. So Ms. Brown is going to come to the mic, Ms. Rupert, and speak specifically as it relates to Play Like a Girl. But I can tell you that will be different this year in working with the superintendent, Dr. Fulton, and the regional superintendents. We're actually going to develop a very intentional toolkit for athletic directors, as well as individual sport coaches, that is more specific and descriptive, I'll say, as it relates to a month before your season, plan this at freshman orientation, or whatever school-wide assemblies, do this activity. To get very descriptive and prescriptive around some marketing and just engagement strategies. And I certainly appreciate, Ms. Rupert, your concern and your just outright displeasure over the years with this being an issue for us as it relates to gender equity in athletics, particularly for participation. So we're going to work on a specific toolkit that'll be ready probably in the next week or so. We have our very first meeting coming up with athletic directors, I believe it's next week, and that's our first touch point. And we will have the toolkit ready. We will also, as I said, work in conjunction with the regional offices on the monitoring piece to ensure that schools are utilizing the toolkit as prescribed. And then we'll, you know, monitor and take appropriate actions as necessary, based on the work that they assist us in doing with the individual schools. That's the first part. And then I have Ms. Brown speak specifically about Play Like a Girl, which has been an awesome experience the last two school years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Brown, Director of Athletics and Student Activities, and I am excited that everybody is becoming familiar with the event, Play Like a Girl. It was actually created to spark more interest and enthusiasm for our female students to engage in athletics and understand it's a means to an end, not an end in of itself. It's an opportunity for them to certainly create those soft skills and different type of collaborative skills, as well as earn a scholarship for college. Our numbers have increased. We've only had the event for two years. We had approximately 1,600 girls from Broward County Schools attend the event. The first year was closer to 2,000. This past year, we actually tried to target various sports. So we had, for example, Ashley Johnson, who is the USA Women's Water Polo goalie, to create an interest for our girls and knowledge about sports they may not be as familiar with, and that was a huge success. I have not started tracking data after the event to determine if it has engaged more athletes to participate in sports, or more girls to participate in sports, but we could look at an avenue to do that. But we are, I do want everybody to also understand the data that comes forth from the equity plan. It is, it needs to be an exact match for the demographics. So if you have 50% girls and 50% boys on your campus, you have to have the exact same match of athletes on your campus. That's a little bit difficult to do, and when you don't have that exact match, then you are not in compliance. But our athletic directors work very hard to make sure that all the students are exposed. It may seem like a pat answer, but it actually is not, because it's something that they, it's a huge part of their job for the advertisements through announcements, parent link. They work with the PE coaches when the sports are coming up to identify athletes that are just engaging in PE, to see any interest or ability and refer them to the sport, let the coaches know. Athletic directors and coaches actually walk around campus, I've witnessed this myself, at lunchtime to make sure that the students are familiar with the sports that are coming up and the tryouts. They engage in the activity fairs as well and setting up tables. You will see at open houses, if any of you attend as the school year is beginning, you will see it's not just for clubs and academic activities, but all of the coaches and athletes are there represented as well to garner that interest. So it's not a pat answer. They really do work hard, and very specifically for the sports that they are lacking female athletes. The last note I do want to make, and this will be a hard change, is it will be increasingly more difficult to have the large number of, not just athletes, but the team sports at the schools if we're not able to increase the pay for our coaches. We are the lowest paying district for our coaches in the state of Florida, and that will become increasingly more difficult to have these sports if we don't have the coaches to coach them.
Great point there. Thank you so much. And Dr. Wanza, Ms. Brown, thank you. I also wanted to say, I had the pleasure of speaking to the student advisors to the board yesterday, and I shared my question and my comments about equity in sports, and the two of them, which is, you know, Dr. Wanza and Ms. Brown, you work with those great kids all the time. And they're looking forward to increased visibility and kind of a buy-in at the school, so there's more kids getting involved in all areas, either academic or a team sport. So I'm excited to actually have them be part of this equation, and I think that may be the part that's been missing over the years, is that we definitely didn't have kids wanting to, you know, join sports and wanting to be able to, you know, possibly get a scholarship, et cetera. So I'm excited to have them actively involved in this process, and I look forward to collaborating with them. And thank you, thank you so much for all the work that you both do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Holness?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So while I appreciate the progress being made in terms of increasing the enrollment of blacks and Hispanic students in AP, IB, dual enrollment, and so forth, we still have a long way to go. We still need to continue to have an aggressive approach to reducing the disparities that exist in terms of enrollment of blacks and Hispanics in the courses that we offer. And so I look at the information here in C1, and I do appreciate it, but I'm still left with thinking, Dr. Hepburn, that there's a lot more as a district that we can do, because all of our students should be, whether, regardless of gender, regardless of race, ethnicity, should be equally represented in all areas of what we offer as a district, and I believe we can. So although I appreciate the incremental increases, I do believe that we need, as a district, to continue to have a very aggressive approach to level the playing field for everyone. So everyone has an equal opportunity regardless of your background. In addition to that, Board Member Hickson, I appreciate the inquiry you made regarding the athletic compliance verification form, and looking at the response that we received. And although I appreciate the response, the response seems to be universal when we have a proportionality problem in terms of males and females matching the percentage of the school in participation in sports. So, for example, the response that we have indicate that, and they are interventive responses, but I don't think they address the issue in terms of targeted approach. For example, it says daily student announcements, Canvas and Focus Platform notifications, and so on and so forth. That will increase participation overall for everyone, but does it address the proportionality issue of males and females not being equally or not reflective of the percentages of males and females within specific high schools? So, and I know that it mentioned here on the response given to Board Member Hickson that we actively solicit the cooperation of physical education teachers to help identify students, particularly in programs where one gender may be underrepresented. I don't, I think that's very general. I don't think that is enough. We look at all these high schools, and all of them had the compliance issue regarding participation of males and females. That issue permeates all of the high schools. So how do we fix it? And I don't think the response we've got will fix the problem. I think we need to have a more targeted approach that is detailed. I think there needs to be a team that's formed at each school, each of these high schools, that does data sharing and execute an action plan that is targeted to the specific need. So, Dr. Hepburn, I just want to get your feedback on, because most of the high schools, if not all of them, were flagged for that non-compliance issue. And the response seems to be very general. So how can we have a targeted approach to remedying that problem so we don't have that as a flag compliance issue in subsequent years?
Yep, thanks for the question, Dr. Holness. So I answer your accelerated course enrollment question too, after I tackle this one. But, so Dr. Wanza and her team are working on that. As she mentioned before, they're to be rolling out a specific toolkit to help principals to have a standard of how we engage all kids, especially to address our disproportionate participation of females to males in our athletic sports. One thing that people don't talk about, that this is not a Broward County issue, this is every high school issue, is that football teams automatically pushes you out of whack with proportion. Most football teams, varsity, a home squad is going to field about 80 players. If you add JV on top of that, you're going to have probably 30, 40, 50 additional players, which already kind of gets you well close to 200. If you have a freshman squad, if you in the county that still does freshmen, you could have 300 football players. When you look at female sports, most of the female sports only field about 15 to 20 players. Girls' basketball, 15 tops. You got to, if you include JV, probably about 25 tops. Lacrosse, same thing, 20, 30 tops. So disproportionately, it's already inherent because of the sports that are available for male and females. Years ago, probably about, I would say over a decade ago now, the state did sanction flag, girls' flag football as a FHSAA sanctioned sport. That kind of helped, but you also have competing factors with track season at the same time. So most of your girls who are going to participate in flag football also are usually the ones that participate in track. And they're a special student. Not every girl wants to run track. So we're trying to tackle that problem just to make sure that the sports that we do have available for our females are fully staffed. It will help us close that disproportionate gap, but it won't fully because of the traditional makeup of football. But Dr. Wanza and her team, they're working on that plan, that they're going to roll out the principles, so that we have a minimum standard across the board of how we engage students, how do we inform students and parents? I think that's the variance that we see from school to school. You got a gung-ho coach, you got a gung-ho athletic director, they're going to be out doing all those wonderful things. If you have a subpar coach, subpar athletic director, they may not be doing the same thing as another coach. So we're going to create a minimum standard, just to make sure at this level, this is what everybody should be doing, and that'll be monitored by the regional offices. For the acceleration part, we talked about the specific subgroups and increasing acceleration enrollment. That is one of our core levels of our work. Acceleration is very, very important to us as a school district, and very important to our students, that we're trying to make sure they have that opportunity. That is a gateway to great opportunities post-secondary, right? If you're taking AP, ACE, IB, you have a better chance of getting Bright Futures. You have a better chance of getting into that wonderful post-secondary opportunity you're trying to get into. You even have opportunity to get industry certification, you could hop in high-paying careers, because industry certification courses are also accelerated courses. Two, we are taking the subjectivity out of it, meaning taking away the people who are sometimes gatekeepers. It could be principal, guidance counselor, teacher, and we're bringing an objective lens, basing it off of student merit. If the student has the FAS scores, if they have the AP potential scores, if they have the PSAT scores, that should open the door for enrollment. And we're supporting our schools in that, just to make sure that that happens. That takes a lot of work and a change in mindset. I've embarked on that work in the past. And it took us about, you know, two or three years to get where we wanted to get to, because you're changing the whole system of schools' mindset of how they put students in courses. And we're on the second year of that journey, which we started having student principals go through and do what we called a master schedule analysis to actually see how they've been placing students into certain courses and the reasons why. So they kind of open up their eyes and say, oh, you know what, I need to have a more objective lens. And so we're constantly chopping down that tree, and our acceleration course enrollment has significantly rose over the past two years. And we're going to continue to increase that and making sure that we're basing off of student merit and performance, and not by how they look or where they come from.
Okay, and Dr. Hepburn, I appreciate that response, and I just have a couple other responses. In terms of the participation in these accelerated courses and the disparity that exists, and I understand that you are approaching this in terms of taking whatever layers of subjectivity there is and having an objective approach based upon concrete data of each student, their performance, and so on. But as far as the students in general, would you say that part of the disparity could also be lack of awareness to specific groups like Hispanics and blacks, that these programs exist, or that they have an opportunity to participate? And if that's one of the factors, how do we create greater awareness? And what kind of a campaign that we can do to increase awareness from not only the students, but the parents, and how important this is in terms of their future career and their advance in, yep?
I think that was part of the majority of the problem too, that contributed to the problem in the past, is awareness, and we're doing a better job of making students aware. I know schools have AP nights and all of those wonderful things to let students know what courses are available to them. We, through Landon and the student advisory groups, they tell us, you know, some of the shortfalls as leaders of district and buildings about what they're not aware of. And so we work with the student advisors to kind of close that gap about, you know, how do you want this message? Because sometimes how we give the information is not the way that they receive information today. So we're doing a better job of closing the information gap. I totally agree with you that we need to do a better job of informing parents, and that's what we're working on with other organizations that have marketing dollars or already have that window of marketing to certain subgroups of parents. Because many parents, I go out all the time and I ask a parent, do you know that your kid can, they take a seven series course of an ACE course, that they are eligible for a Bright Future Scholarship? And they're like, no. And it's like, you know, shame on us, right? We need to do a better job of making sure that you're aware of that. We need to do a better job of making sure that you're aware of that information. Because a kid that we challenge with an accelerated course, oftentimes they're not, they haven't, they haven't experienced that rigor and they're the ones that don't want to be in it. So we try to educate the parents about the opportunity down the road so that they can encourage their kids to be in it and stay in it. So we're doing a better job of that to educate our parents about the opportunity. Because a kid who's never been in an honors accelerated course, anything like that, is going to first time like, I don't want to do this. It's too hard. It's too much writing. It's too much thinking.
Awesome. Well, I thank you for that response and I believe the parental involvement is extremely important because a lot of these parents, especially if they're from communities with economic hardship, they may not be aware or even have the time to research these opportunities. And I think if we bring awareness to them, then they can become a motivating factor for their students who, for their children who may be highly advanced but are not aware of the opportunities that they can utilize based upon their academic ability. And lastly, thank you Chair, that I'd like to mention. In terms of what you said, Dr. Hepburn, regarding Dr. Wanza and her team having some sort of approach with regards to the athletic compliance issue, I also think that there needs to be a school-based involvement because these are specific schools. They know what the issue is. To develop some kind of action plan, maybe with Dr. Wanza's team, that has a targeted approach to the specific gender disparity issue for that specific school. So I think the school-based leadership should be heavily involved too to address the compliance issue. And I hope, I know what, I heard what you said, that it's a challenge because of the different sports that are available. But I hope we can remedy the issue at some point.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think our student advisor would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Landon Swelberg, student advisor to the school board. I just wanted to follow up on what Dr. Hepburn said because we've done a lot of great work with Ms. Hollingsworth's team in student services. Rolling out next year, students will have access to Zello course planning, which is a phenomenal feature. We've done a lot of testing with students in this area and getting their feedback. So that is access for both parents and students to be able to see what the course profile is at their school and then what the, I guess you can say the strings attached are to those classes in terms of, you know, if you're taking AP seminar, how that goes into now a Bright Futures opportunity or like Dr. Hepburn said with the ACE diploma. So we've gotten some great feedback in that area. So I wanted to thank staff for their support with that.
Thank you. Mr. Sever.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to go back to the girls in sports issue that we've been having a pretty robust conversation about this morning. Specifically, I'm looking at the presentation and I guess we are required to file an athletic compliance verification form. And pursuant to this form, we are not in compliance with section 1,000.05 subsection 3, D2. My question is, if we are not meeting our requirements pursuant to the statute, which is identified as the Florida Educational Equity Act, what is the penalty for non-compliance? And I'm also interested in knowing how long has the district not been in compliance with this specific portion of the statute?
Dr. Hepburn.
Thanks for the question. Not sure what the penalty is. Dr. Lozano or Vladimir?
We can do a follow-up on that.
Yep. He's up. Do you have a knowledge about?
Yeah, Vladimir Alvarez, EO and ADA compliance. I've been in the department for about 14 years, almost 17 years. I recall that we have been out of compliance since that time. There haven't been no penalty. The intent or the plan is to ensure that if we are not in compliance, what are we doing? And that's why they provide the monitoring form so we can write down what is triadies that we're going to follow in order to try to get close to the appropriate number for the compliance. But there is not a specific penalty for the district and they haven't been known. As long as we show that we're working towards the goal that is needed.
So we've not been in compliance, if I believe I heard you correctly, for the last 14 years?
Yeah, you asked that and I have to tell you, yes.
And I would suspect that many high schools have not been in compliance, especially probably early, late 90s, 80s and early 2000s. Because if you take out flag football for girls, you didn't have enough sports in the, that were offered by high schools in the state to even get to that proportion that they're trying to look for. Just the amount of sports available with the amount of seats in those sports proportionally. When you look at male sports, it is difficult to close that gap.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear. Do we just not have enough girl's sports teams? Or is it from, what I think and what I'm hearing is just a lack of interest from our female students in participating in the teams that are available to them?
I'd say there's a little bit of both, but when you look at traditionally this girl's sports offerings, if you fielded, if a high school fielded all of its male sports offerings and fielded all of its girl's sports offerings, there would still be a gap because football, you can have up to 80 kids on a football team. And if you have varsity, JV, and if you're, if you still do freshman football, three times 80, whatever that math is, that's going to outnumber, yeah, 240 versus your female sports, basketball, about 15 students. JV, girls' basketball, about 15 students. And then you start putting in lacrosse if they have lacrosse, you're putting in soccer if you have. It doesn't even equate to those three male sports at all. So inherently, it's disproportionate because of the availability of seats or roster seats on a female sport.
Understood. And I would, in reviewing some of the data that was provided to us, there was a spreadsheet that was given which lists every traditional high school in the district. For some reason, they're all listed as district school. District six high schools, I assure my colleagues that they're not all in my district. That being said, I would like to acknowledge South Plantation, which has 284 male students, athletes, and 289 female student athletes. I thought that was pretty impressive. So kudos to South Plantation. Maybe we need to take a closer look as to what that high school is doing to help other high schools in the district that aren't meeting the quotas and requirements. Lastly, I just would like confirmation and I know that we haven't been tagged in the last four years and I don't know if this question's better directed to you or perhaps Ms. Batista. I just want to make sure that there's no chance or that there's no actual penalty outlaid anywhere in the statute or anything like that. And I realize that we may not have gotten in trouble in the last 14 years, but that doesn't necessarily mean that Tallahassee can't come down on us for, you know, whatever reason. I would like some type of assurance that as we work to try to gain compliance, we're not actually facing any penalties from the state, from the county, from the federal government, specifically any type of funding freezing which we're dealing with now. I just want to make sure that we're not subjected to any of that as long as we're giving it the old, I guess, college try to get these numbers up.
Ms. Batista.
I would have to do a follow-up on that.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowman.
Thank you, Chair. I also just had a couple of comments about the equity in the female versus male sports, which by the way, one of my schools actually had lower male participation. So there, you know, I think we need to look at this holistically as well. And it's very concerning to me what Ms. Brown, or Ms. Brown just said about the fact that we have the lowest paid coaches in the state. I mean, first of all, I think we have to look at, I can't overstate the importance of athletic programs, I think, to the experience of a student and not at the expense of any other extracurriculars because I fully support those as well and being fully funded. But I mean, one of the things that distinguishes us as a school district is our long tradition of great sports, our rivalries. You know, people talk about these things going back for decades. And, you know, your grandpa played on the team, your brother played on the team. So the fact that we're kind of having these disparities, I understand where we're coming with, you know, maybe gender inequity and maybe the statute isn't necessarily reasonable. But I'd like to really look at the quality of our programming that we're offering and if we're attract. I mean, the, one of the most important experiences that a kid has is a mentor and who's a better mentor than your coach. I think anyone that's played sports has somebody that they can look back on that really changed their life. So I would like to explore making sure that we're competitive when we're paying coaches. I mean, this isn't just a one-off and you're sitting in a club for a couple of days after school. They're, you know, this is every day after school, it's weekends and the time is immeasurable, I think, for what they're putting in. So how do we look at that so that we're competitive in the, in the state with what we're paying our coaches?
I'll let Dr. Hepburn answer that, except I will say that we as a board have asked for the last two years for supplements to be looked at and to increase the payment, you know, the salary of our coaching staff. I coached. I got like 50 cents an hour. So I've been asking about that since I first got here and the board has asked for it. But we keep being told we have to wait until they get the salary taken care of and then it doesn't come back. So I will echo the question because we have asked for that a number of times. So, Dr. Hepburn.
Yes. Great question. And I know people like myself who've coached and you and many of, on my team have coached in the past and feel your pain of that 50 cents per hour for all those long hours, but it was about helping kids. So yeah, we've heard that request. I know the team is working on that. I know if Dr. Lozano or even Mr. Azerito can give specifics, because I think it was tied to the collective bargaining. And we were trying to separate that out so we can actually do something different with our coaching stipends.
Yes, thank you. David Azerito, Executive Director. We did separate it. So the athletic supplements are no longer part of the BTU CPA, so we can act as we'd like. Ms. Brown's department has already can put together a study of all the neighboring districts. So we have what we make versus, I think it was a 40%, a 40% increase would get us more to where the other districts and neighboring districts are. So that's been presented to other departments to take a look at and let us know what we can do.
Yep. So that'll be forthcoming. And I'll leave it there. I was about to get off on a tangent about just the state period. But as far as coaches across the board, it's an issue versus other states, so.
So when is that going to be forthcoming? I think we need to nail it down because the school, the school year is rapidly approaching. And I think, you know, it's important for us to have the best quality athletic programs. Then we have to be attracting the best quality coaches. So when are we getting that?
Let me follow up because we're working on budget and all those things. Because it is a, it also impacts our budget because of the amount of coaches and other supplements that it's wrapped up in and then we can bring that forward, but we can follow up with a timeline.
And it impacts our coaches, but it really impacts our kids. So if we're, you know, holistically educating the kids, I think it's very important. And I also just, in terms of, you know, the, this idea that we're going to advertise women's sports more because that's somehow the failing, that no one's getting the memo that this is happening, which I kind of have a, I'm skeptical that that's the actual reason why people aren't signing up. Something that I've noticed as a parent is that the information is not available on the website, which is what a parent would do. Like I actually got my son into cross country when he was in sixth grade because it was on the website as a miracle because it's never been there again. But the parents are the ones that are taking you to practice and getting, I mean, they need to know when the practice is and what the schedule looks like and when we're starting the season. And none of that information is available to me as a parent. I have lots of children involved in a lot of athletics and other activities and it's, I don't feel like I have the control to figure out even what's going on. So in terms of communication, I think like blanket communication, so you can go to the website, figure out what sports are being offered, when the meetings are, when the practices are going to be. Takes a lot of the guesswork out of that and then the parents are able to then encourage the kids to go.
No, that is awesome feedback. As you know, we have just launched the brand new Broward County Public Schools website. And so I know on the schools end, they are doing their updates. So we can kind of add a standard approach about the information that you mentioned. That's great feedback just to make sure that's on the schools websites.
Just one more thing. So the track season and the girls' flag football is the same exact time?
Correct. Unless it's changed recently, but I know as a high school principal, it was the same. It's still the same? Yes, correct. It's still the same.
Because I think my understanding is the best tracked athletes are the football players. So that doesn't make any sense with those tracks.
And you don't get scholarships for flag football?
I mean, some do because we have, we actually have someone, I think, at Flanchili or we have a girl that's, at least has her NIL.
Oh, she has NIL, okay.
But I imagine that a scholarship is forthcoming because she was only a junior last year. But it seems to me that that's a conflict for women because the men's track and football seasons are up.
Thank you. Dr. Zeeman.
Thanks, Chair. Love the board sentiment about athletics. I kind of want to add a little bit to that discussion because we're starting to become more and more comfortable as a player in a world in which there's choices to be made. And so in that kind of competitive environment, you have to start thinking about why do people choose our high schools instead of other high schools? And clearly, clearly from parents, it's because of our athletics. I'd love it to be because of our ACE program and our AP and our Cambridge and all that other stuff, which is great. And that's certainly in the decision matrix for a lot of parents. But at the end of the day, a lot of kids want to go to Coconut Creek High School because they have a world-class lacrosse program. Or they want to go to MSD because they've won the baseball state championship five years in a row, which is still kind of hard to get your arms around. Baseball's the kind of sport where if you're great, you win 60% of the time. MSD winning five straight state championships blows us away. So I just want us as a board and maybe as a cabinet and superintendent to start thinking about these things. Why do we win out over charter and private high schools? One reason is we have better athletics. Like across the board, we have better athletics than private and charter schools. And homeschool, we're definitely better than mom or dad or the uncle sitting around playing hoops after, after school. And I know some homeschool kids actually come back to our schools in order to play on our teams, which is I think a great thing for them to do. But all of the benefits that we get as a system are repeated in the individuals, which is kind of cool. Because if you play sports, you learn things that you would never learn if you don't. And that's true whether it's physical sports, things like drama or debate, or even something like esports, which is growing 50% in participation per year. To be on a team is to learn some lessons that you wouldn't learn otherwise. So I hope, Chair, that we think about middle schools as part of our plan as well. And so Chair, are you aware of whether or not any of these efforts we're having, particularly on gender balancing athletic or other team participation? Are we doing anything at middle schools, as Ms. Bowman pointed out? Oftentimes, kids are getting much more athletic in the sixth, seventh, eighth grade and they do prep stuff so that they can play in high schools. But are we working in the middle schools to increase participation of men and women?
Dr. Hepburn, I will say I know that we have a very robust middle school athletics program, but I'll let Dr. Hepburn fill in the rest of your answers.
Yeah, and I'll let the team fill in the rest of the answer because we actually have a middle school sports athletic association, which is not common in other school districts across the state. So I know, and also district-wide reward ceremonies for those middle school athletes too, which is not common at other school districts across the state, especially the large ones. So Ms. Brown, if you want to add anything.
You actually stole a lot of my thunder as I was walking up here. Not helpful. But yes, we do have a very robust middle school athletic program under Jennifer Hamilton, our middle school athletic director. We work a lot with the high schools, the middle schools, competing at the high schools to show them what is to come next. Certainly the awards programs, working with the, with the coaches. And the middle school girls at as many schools as we can accommodate are also invited to the Play Like a Girl event. But we do push just the same at the middle school level. The strategies are shared just the same with the middle school athletic directors as well for the advertisements for the sports and. And, um, it's definitely, it's definitely growing. We actually have, um, in the middle school athletic association, there are more, uh, schools asking to join the middle school athletic association. And not just schools asking to join, all the public schools are a part of it, but some of the charter schools asking to join. But we also have parents and schools asking for more sports at the middle school level. So, it is definitely growing and continuing.
Well, uh, Chair, I look forward to some good and quick discussions about the funding of athletics, not just, uh, of coaches, but of athletics. We, in my mind, are under-investing across the board in equipment. And with all due respect to these answers about middle schools, I have three middle school kids, so I have some pretty clear, uh, 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 observations about what's going on. And it's not sufficient in middle schools for what we're doing. I guarantee it. That's an area where if we invested more, we would get greater results, particularly from our young, uh, girls in middle schools playing in some form of, of organized activities, uh, at the high school level. I'm very proud of my kids' middle schools. They won the countywide basketball tournament this year and the school went crazy, right? And so, that's wonderful, but there's not enough of it. The fields that we have at middle schools are substandard. They are, they are way below the standards that the cities have for things like, uh, um, football fields, soccer fields, uh, baseball fields, tennis courts, pickleball courts. Where we have good fields in middle schools, it's been paid for by municipalities. So, what I'm looking forward as a board is not, you know, can we get another five hundred bucks to, to coaches? I've coached Little League for eleven seasons. I haven't been paid a dime. But I'll be back for my twelfth season and until my son decides not to play, I'm gonna continue to coach. And not because they pay us or not pay us, but I do believe that it's more than just pay for coaches. It's about the facilities, which I think are appalling, and particularly at the middle schools, they're substandard at high schools. I just walked to high school this past weekend with a baseball coach. I was embarrassed. You know, we don't invest in the things that give us great competitive advantages and we need to think about that if we wanna win back students. And so, I'm looking forward to that being a bigger discussion than just a discussion about, um, about coaches' salaries because there's, there's room for us to grow. And with all due respect to your answer about middle schools, having an association doesn't mean sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, uh, female students that we have are being encouraged or having the opportunities in middle school to do the kinds of things that they could do. If they had more opportunities, I think we'd have more participation, uh, at the high school level. But I think that's true for young men and young women. It's not a website issue. That's great. It'd be nice to fix that. It's a systemic issue. And I believe that we're ready to flip the switch as a board to say, why don't we reinvest in something that will allow us to win back more students, uh, at that critical level? And so, I'm looking forward to that. But Chair, uh, what can we do about bringing athletics? Not athletic coach supplements, but how can we bring athletics? And I would like to see what the total investment we're making in athletics is in Broward County schools. How could we bring that to a workshop in the next couple of months?
Dr. Hepburn?
That's noted. We can bring it to a workshop in, um, in the fall. And I appreciate the, the dialogue. And I also en- encourage if there's any municipalities that we don't partner with to create new partnerships so we can actually enhance our athletic fields. It's a, um, I've seen it done. I've, I've, I've seen the benefit from the school and also the, the people who live in the city. But the kids actually win in the long run, uh, with some great, uh, high-quality athletic facilities, especially when it comes to middle school kids and sometimes even elementary too. So, appreciate the dialogue.
And in that dialogue, I will open up the discussion about, um, individual and corporate sponsorships. It is, uh, an amazing county that we have where so many, uh, uh, working men and women went to high schools here and they want to give back financially. And we haven't figured out a way to make that easy yet. But someday, we're, we're gonna invent a Broward County Alumni Association. And we're gonna start asking people to give in ways that are meaningful. And those meaningful ways are easy if it's an athletic endeavor. People in Broward County love to pay for schools. They have been unanimous in the referenda that we've put out there. But there's a whole bunch of private givers. Uh, I earned eleven, uh, letters at Fort Lauderdale High School, twelve, twelve letters. I played three sports for four years. But if someone had called me and I wasn't serving on this board and said, hey, can you donate to, uh, high school athletics in your high school? I would give generously. And I think there's thousands of other people. And I hope that that's part of the funding, uh, Mr. Superintendent, because we haven't made that easy for people yet. And we ought to make it easy. Uh, it ought to be an app and you should click on it and give a thousand bucks and you put your name on the bleacher seat at Hollywood Hills High School or whatever, uh, whatever we can do for these people legally. But I think there's some opportunities not just to spend more money, but to actually raise more money so that we can take care of the facilities, uh, at our middle schools and high schools that are just so, so critical to the development of our youngsters in Broward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we were, we've, as a board, said we wanted to look into sponsorship, so maybe you could bring that back with the workshop so that we can move that along. Because I did recently ask about that as well. Mrs. Alhada?
Thank you. Uh, so, I love the conversation. First thing I'd like to talk about is the Fort Lauderdale United FC Women's Soccer National Team that we have right here in Fort Lauderdale. I think we have a beautiful opportunity to work with them, to collaborate with them, for them to come to have the players, women's soccer players come to our schools, be leaders. Try to encourage the students to join the soccer team and also have the students go to the soccer games. And so, they can see what, what it would be like if you can become a professional women's soccer player. So, I would like to see that relationship, uh, have a stronger relationship with the Fort Lauderdale United FC Women's Soccer Team. The other thing is, uh, I think if you go to our school's websites, it speaks volumes to what we prioritize. Meaning that you see a picture on the athletics page of all boys. Well, if we're trying to get more girls to play in sports, then we need to represent that on our websites. We need to have pictures of girls playing sports so the girls see that and not just boys seeing that. Also, I think we could do a better job with saying, whether it's girls volleyball, I see boys volleyball. So, we are in the mindset of wanting to do this, but we're not representing that and showing it on our websites to promote female athletes to participate in sports more. The other thing I question in regards to whether the, um, and I know this is required, but the online athletic clearance procedure, if that is a hindrance for student athletes in general to, uh, play in our sports? It is a very lengthy, robust, difficult process. I don't know if anybody's ever thought about that. I mean, it, it took me days to, to fill that out. And I signed my son up for every sport, cheerleading included, because I didn't wanna have to go back into filling that form out, if he decides to do cheerleading, so. But yeah, so it is, so it is something I'd like, uh, Dr. Hepburn, if we can look into.
Dr. Hepburn?
Yes, that's noted.
Perfect. And then the other thing I wanted to, uh, well, I agree with absolutely paying our coaches more money. I would like to see, um, in the next week, a, a memo in regards to how much we pay our coaches now. What is the, the state medium as far as paying coaches? And I think that's something we can get out rather quickly.
I believe we got something that compared us to the two districts and the state, so maybe they can just resend it.
I'm making a note to resend it.
Okay, perfect. And also in regards, so, so I know this isn't one of our, our sports, but I do think pickleball is, um, hot. It's something that our students love to play. And I would love to see how we can engage pickleball into our PE classes, into our, our recess time, you know, what that would look like. But whether it's a pickleball club, you know, yes, we want kids to play in sports, but I think also we just want them to be active and they love pickleball. So, why don't we try to do something that they love? Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Hepburn or Mrs. Brown, do you know if pickleball is on the horizon to become a sport to that point?
I don't have the exact statistics. I know it is discussed at our state-level athletic director meetings that there's interest in it becoming an F H S A sport, but at this time, it is not.
Okay. Thank, thank you for the follow-up. All right, great. All those in favor of C1 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Can I have a motion in a second on item C2?
No move.
It's been moved by Dr. Zeeman, seconded by Dr. Holness. Any public comment on C2?
No ma'am.
Uh, Mrs. Alhada?
Yes, so absolutely yes to terminate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Severa.
I echo that as well. Uh, I'm obviously a hundred percent, a hundred and ten percent in favor of this. I, I just had a question because I, I was, I was approached, uh, by quite a few parents, uh, on this recently. And I, I don't know if it was conflicting news reports or maybe, uh, we weren't doing a good enough job with the messaging. But it's my understanding that this gentleman was, um, at the, at the Westchester Elementary School, um, previously before the most recent incident happened. And he was arrested and charged with stalking and harassment and all these terrible allegations. Was he, and he was put on like administrative leave or I don't know what the classification was. But I, I, I would like confirmation that when that first charge happened, I believe it was last year, he was physically removed from the school, correct?
That is correct. He was removed from the school and, uh, placed in the, uh, department where he had no contact with students.
So, what specifically was he doing after the first offense happened? Was he in this building? Was he in another, uh, B C P S building? What, what was he doing after the first?
In another B C P S building.
Okay. And with no access to children?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of item C2, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is item F3. Can I have a motion in a second?
So, move.
It's been moved by Dr. Zeeman, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Any public comment on?
No ma'am.
Uh, Dr. Holness?
No, I'm good. Actually, some of my questions were answered in a meeting, um, yesterday, so I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Zeeman?
Thanks. Uh, I was so tickled that someone else pulled F3 for the first time, so thank you for doing that, Dr. Holness. I, I get a little lonely, uh, talking, uh, kind of about the budget. But it is important to just take a minute and think a little bit, um, about some of the shocks that are going on in education funding. Everybody's aware of the federal funding withhold. Uh, that affects Broward County by thirty million dollars. Is that correct, Mr. Superintendent?
That's correct.
And so far, we've gotten a couple million back, you know, for after-school programs, but twenty-eight million dollars is a big hole. Is it also true, based on F3, Mr. Superintendent, that we're running ahead on medical claims?
That is also correct.
Yeah. And I think that's in the ten to fifteen million dollar, uh, a year range. It's just important, I think, to set expectations when we get these financial reports about what's going on. The net-net is that we're down, uh, a significant amount of money, um, you know, for next year's spending. But, uh, let's just, uh, continue, I think, to, uh, encourage the federal government to release the title, uh, of, uh, federal grants, funds. It is so important for students nationwide, not just in Broward, uh, to get the services. And I look forward to more discussions about that specific set of circumstances in the future, Mr. Superintendent. But just from a financial perspective, Dr. Holness, this is a great item to think a little bit about. Because we just talked a lot about, let's go spend some more money on athletics, let's spend some more money on, uh, some of our pregnant, um, uh, students and things like that, which are all good things. At the end of the day, we're down roughly fifty million dollars going into next year. And again, Florida is what number out of fifty states in terms of education funding, Chair?
Fifty?
Fiftieth of fifty. And as I continue to remind people in the media, that is the first sentence of every story they should write. That in spite of being fiftieth in funding, Broward lifted up eleven thousand more students in E L A grade proficiency in the last two years. In spite of being fiftieth, uh, we are doing dramatic improvements in, in the number and percentage of schools that are A or B. And in the leaps that we're getting, uh, particularly from, uh, C schools being cut in half this year, it's really important to think about that. But when you have fifty, there's two fifty numbers here, Ms. CFO. We're fiftieth in funding statewide. We're behind Mississippi and Alabama in terms of the public funding for education. We do three billion dollars a year to fund people who already had their kids in private school to get eight thousand dollars back each. And we're fifty million dollars short going into next year in terms of general fund spending. So, um, those are all just good, I think, takeaways about the financial report, uh, where we're at right now and can help us, uh, calibrate a little bit about our enthusiasm about spending more money. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. All those in favor of item F3, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is J2. Can I have a motion in a second? It's been moved by Dr. Zeeman, seconded by Mrs. Bowman. Any public comment on?
No ma'am.
Dr. Zeeman?
Thanks again, Chair. Um, I am just noting in this, um, page one of the summary for this item, uh, that this reciprocal use agreement has already expired. And there's a few sentences on the bottom paragraph that talks about, uh, what happened. I'm just curious, uh, Dr. Hepburn, about the coordination with municipalities. It's hard. There's thirty, thirty-one different municipalities in Broward County and there's only one Broward County school. So, we're outnumbered, um, but they are, are not just important partners of ours, but they are increasingly important. Whether they're talking about establishing their own charter school network or they're talking about, you know, funding, uh, playground and other sports, uh, fields on our schools and, and being able to use them together and all that as we try and eliminate park deserts. What would you recommend to the staff about coordinating with these thirty-one municipalities? If they start to get up against the chocks in terms of getting things to the board in time so we can approve them before? Uh, I, I'm not, I can't tell from the summary whether it was our fault or the city's faults or some kinda co-mingling of fault here. But what can we do so that these things are either nonexistent or incredibly rare where we, we miss an opportunity to renew a critical agreement on time?
Dr. Hepburn?
Yes, um, thanks for the question, Dr. Zeeman. We have a great relationship with our municipalities, we actually meet with them face-to-face, um, on a quarterly basis. And in conversation with many, especially their city managers, that they, we converse via email, phone, um, all the time. When it comes to these agreements, uh, but for this specific one, I can, um, pinpoint, um, what's the issue. Could be, um, uh, delay with their legal team or, or their city manager, um, in, in finding out at the last minute that something's about to expire and then they start the process. Or it could be us. Um, I don't know, but we do have great relationships with our municipalities and re-engage with them as much as possible for, uh, a, a common collaborative, um, priority when it comes to facilities, students, wherever the case may be. So, especially City of Pompano is one of those, um, great, uh, partners that we do have.
And on, on your team, is there someone individually who's responsible for municipal coordination or is everybody responsible?
Everybody's responsible for their specific area division for this. This would be, um, the COO's division, uh, for reciprocal, uh, reciprocal agreements. If it's, uh, around support and coordination with supplemental education in their facilities, it'd be academics. So, there's various things that we work with municipalities for, um, and so it depends on the division leader.
Thank you.
Yes.
All those in favor of item J2, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is O3. Can I have a motion in a second?
So, move.
It's been moved by Mrs., Ms. Thompson, seconded by Dr. Zeeman. Any public comment?
No ma'am.
Board member discussion, Doc, uh, Mr. Severa?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I had a question regarding a specific provision within this agreement with Publix. For the record, I, I think this is a good thing. Uh, I am a fan of the public supermarket chain, although I think I can do a better job of lowering the price of their sushi, which has gone up of late. But, um, being that as it may, uh, if we look at subsection I of this agreement, which number one, does not appear to be one of the form agree, the form agreements that our legal department, that our great legal department, uh, puts together, um, for most of the contractual relationships we have with parties. But this appears to be a, a Publix form or template that they use. Specifically focusing on, on section I, a provision I, the insurance and indemnity provision. Section one, Roman numeral two. According to the language as it stands, this states that if public fail, if Publix fails to obtain the consent or permission from a disabled student, an exceptional individual, or their legal guardian, and God forbid something were to happen as a result of that, that we would have to indemnify them. I don't know why that, excuse me. I don't know why the fact that that jabbed me the, the wrong way. Uh, obviously, in my profession, I'm, I'm very familiar with how indemnity agreements work and, and the need for them. But when we're dealing with, uh- But when we're dealing with exceptional students in a program like this, I'm really not comfortable with an opt-out or indemnity provision for them that gets them off the hook if they fail to get the required parental consent for something. So I guess my question is, number one, is the language of this provision or any portion of the contract negotiable, or is it just a take it or leave it type situation? And if it is, what steps can we take to possibly either water that down or remove it altogether?
Ms. Batista.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. The item is negotiable. I don't know to what extent this provision was negotiated during the, you know, the negotiation process of the contract, but that, I don't know if it needs to be approved today, but we could go back and try to renegotiate something with Publix.
If there is a basis to negotiate, I would make a motion to strike that portion of subsection I, which is the insurance and indemnity provision, specifically I1, Roman numeral 2. I am not in favor of indemnifying Publix for their failure to gain necessary permission or lease slips from the parents of exceptional or disabled students, individuals who may be involved in this program. I think if they do that, and again, God forbid a thousand times over, something bad happens, they need to be held liable. That's not a standard that I'm willing to shy away from, especially when we're considering the students that are going to be participating in this, as well as, you know, the tasks that they will be doing with this program. So if we do have the ability to negotiate, I would request that we go back and we ask them to strike that provision. I'm not suggesting that we waive indemnity altogether. They'll probably tell us to go fly a kite if we went to them, but certainly this provision of this subsection, I think, needs to go.
Before, I know you're making the motion, but just to make a point, because we've been trying to get this contract for a while. So the students that participate in that don't do it on their own. They go through a program in the school. It's really incumbent on us as the district to get those permission slips, not Publix. So there shouldn't be a student participating if there was not a permission slip because they go as a group through the PAST program to participate in this particular thing. It's not just students going to Publix on their own to get a job.
So, I understand. Let me make sure I can clarify the point in my head, because maybe perhaps that makes me feel a little bit better. Is it the case then that you, as a student, cannot physically participate in this unless you register something with the district?
Yes.
And all of the necessary paperwork is in there?
Correct.
Before you're able to actually step foot? So this is not something that if they want to take on an additional task or do something else while within the program at Publix, that they would have to get a necessary consent form? Because that's my concern, is that they go in, they start doing some things, and then they want to switch tasks or take on a higher responsibility, and they need a permission slip or a form for, and it's missed, and something happens, and then Publix is like, oh, you know, it's not our fault that, you know, we didn't get the parent's permission to let the kid do something different.
Ms. Batista.
Yes, thank you. And so the information that I am, you know, looking at right now, it says that, you know, we are, the district, in fact, facilitates that process to obtain the approval from the parent, so, and Publix was not willing to negotiate on that point.
Okay, so I will withdraw my motion as long as we're 100% clear. There's no scenario in which Publix will allow the student, one of our students, to do something outside of the scope of this agreement without having to go to a parent for additional consent or permission? Because that's my overall concern.
Yeah, not through this contract.
Okay, understood. Then I withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for the clarification on that.
We've just been working on this for a while. All those in favor of item O3 say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Say no. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is item O4. Can I have a motion in a second? It's been moved by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by Dr. Zeeman. Any public comment?
No ma'am.
Okay, so this one is me, but my computer went out, so hold on. I have a question on the item. So in the executive summary, it says that this is for a fourth renewal. Sorry. Sorry, hold on, let me. Now it doesn't want to open. It says it's for a fourth renewal, but the renewal, the second renewal is good through May of 2026. So I'm just wondering, is something written wrong? Are we going out extra early? And what happened to the third renewal? Because it says the first renewal, then the second renewal goes through June, I think, of 20, or May of 2026. But it's coming to us now for what it says in the, in the executive summary for the fourth, it says approve the fourth amendment to the agreement between the School Board of Broward County, Florida, and Microsoft under recommended action. But then it says the original agreement was June 1st, 2021, through May 31st, 2024. First renewal was June 1st, 24, through May 31st, 2025. Second renewal is June 1st, 2025, through May 31st, 2026. So there's no third mentioned in here, but yet the action is to approve the fourth amendment. So I was just a little confused.
Mr. Davis.
Good morning, Trey Davis, Chief Information Officer. So I want to simplify this. The Fourth Amendment is basically because the vendor left out our initial discount of 56% on Microsoft Fabric, you know, so we would be spending $50,000 on Microsoft Fabric, which is our data management analytics component, instead of paying $90,000. So that, the only reason for the inclusion as a Fourth Amendment was because the 56% was left out of the original back in May, and through the General Counsel recommended a Fourth Amendment.
Okay, so then it's still, the contract is still only through May 31st of 2026?
That is correct.
Okay, because I didn't say that on here in the background, that this was because there was an error, so just moving forward, if, maybe it's somewhere I didn't see it, I don't know, but it's not in the executive summary, so it wasn't clear why we were going through there.
I appreciate your feedback, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of item O4 say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The next item is O5. Can I have a motion in a second?
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Zeeman, seconded by Mr. Severa. Any public comment on?
No ma'am.
Let's see, Mrs. Bowman.
I just pulled this because it's so cute that we have this agreement with the Humane Society, and I'm very happy for the partnership. I think it's a very mutually agreeable situation, because obviously, I'm sure they need as much help as they can get over there. I know that I am not personally allowed to go there anymore, because I always come back with a dog, and I have too many. But this is a great opportunity for the kids, and I just wanted to commend whoever worked this out, because I think that veterinary medicine is definitely, or assisting or whatever, is definitely a fantastic career to pursue and, or check out.
Thank you. I also pulled this, so my question is, when do the students participate in this? Is this something they do on their own? Is it something through Wes Broward that has the pre-vet program? You know, do they do it, like, are we providing the organization of this, or is this something students do completely on their own?
Dr. Fulton, or Dr. Cohen?
Sure. So these are service hours. Students have to make up to 250 hours, and it's just not with the Humane Society. So it is part of the school. It's with vets, veterinarian, they can go to independent veterinarian offices as well as the Humane Society.
So this is something we, that's what I'm trying to find, we organize this through students that are in the pre-vet program?
That is correct.
So it's done during school time?
Yes, ma'am.
Or, well, Mr. Strauss is shaking his head, no.
It's both.
Okay.
It's after-hours and during-school hours.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification. All those in favor of item O5 say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Passes unanimously without doctors, oh, here he is, okay. Passes unanimously. The last consent item of the day is O6. Can I have a motion in a second?
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Zeeman, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Any public comment on O6?
No ma'am.
Mr. Severa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking at some of the language in the proposed amendment to this agreement, specifically in our documentation, it is paragraph 3 under amended provisions, and the provision that is being sought to be amended is, under the original version of the contract, is 2.03 subsection B. It's a list of the educational records that we can turn over. I just needed some clarification, because this agreement gives several categories of information that could be turned over to the Children's Services Council of Broward. If we look at 34 CFR 99.31 of the federal code, it does allow instances in which education records can be turned over as long as, quote, "all personally identifiable information is removed." And that's according to the CFR. My question is, if we look at the proposed amendment, it appears that we are giving access to a student's, quote, "pseudo-identification" number, along with a laundry list of other items. My question is, what specifically is a pseudo-identification number? And is there any ways, hopefully the answer is no, is there any way of that being tracked back to the actual student, which would then in turn subject us to not complying with 34 CFR 99.31 of the federal code?
Dr. Hepburn?
I'll defer to Ms. Batista, then I can add any additional comments if needed.
Thank you. The pseudo-identification number, as it states, is not the real student number, and my understanding is, is that no, it cannot be traced back. None of this information could be traced back to the student.
Do we know specifically what that's comprised of? Because I know sometimes in the legal world, when they say pseudo-identification number, it's like your full initials and like your birthday, right? I'm just wondering what the makeup is as far as the district is concerned about what, is it just a randomly generated number that's assigned to students? What specifically encompasses this pseudo-identification number?
Mr. Bowman.
Go ahead, Mr. Bowman.
Hi, Richard Baum, Director of Educational Assessment, Analysis, and Research. So yes, we do a random, a random number. We do, we use a random number generator, develop that number, and then we only keep the connecting file in our office, and then provide the pseudo-number to outside vendor.
Perfect. That makes me feel better, that it's a randomly generated number. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All those in favor of item O6 say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously without Mrs. Bowman on the dais. Okay, thank you. This is the time of the agenda where we have split the general public speakers to incorporate a morning session. Each registered speaker is reminded to present their agenda comments in accordance with policy 1020. The first speaker of the morning is Mr. Delvin King. You don't see him. Next up is Dr. Natalie Lynch Walsh.
Good morning. Dr. Natalie Lynch Walsh, Plantation, Florida. Before I get to the things I was going to speak about, a couple of things have come up so far. It's not every day that Dr. Zeeman and I are on the same page, but bringing all of those collective bargaining agreements to a workshop is absolutely critical, because you just approved recently the PBA agreement. Word discipline not there. It is in their agreement in Palm Beach, so they know how to put discipline into a bargaining agreement in Palm Beach and probably in other places. But if they fight it, then maybe it's time to go with FOP. The teachers' contract, when you look at these bargaining agreements, they are ancient. And other than salaries, and I can't even think of anything else that's been cracked open, nothing has been touched. And when DAC talked about creating a student-centered framework, what we got pushback on is, oh, well, you'd have to, that would impact the agreement. Well, the agreement also references management rights and policies, so there are ways of going about changing things without having to crack open an agreement, but these agreements are definitely ripe for cracking open. So I fully support that. I'm not going to be here at 5 o'clock, so I just want to say the words, "long-range facilities master plan." This is what we did not have in 2014, is a large reason why the smart bond turned out the way it did. The Council of Great City Schools said you should have one, and there was supposed to be two parts to doing the facility condition assessment. Facility condition assessment, master planner. We keep hearing about the first one, and we keep hearing rumors about the second, but you were supposed to have a master planner there to catch the data as it was happening. That hasn't happened. Oh, and by the way, what, where's the steering committee? Because we dissolved the steering committee, but I haven't heard about there being a new one. And it's hard for the ship to not hit an iceberg if there's nobody steering it. But getting back to collective bargaining agreements, policy 2050. When we were here last, I believe the Chair read the policy to your General Counsel. In the policy, it says that the School Board hereby delegates authority to the Chief of the Broward County Schools Police to develop a manual procedures that provide a framework for the Broward County School Police Law Enforcement Agency, set standards, and define specific roles, standards, and protocols. Nope, that's supposed to be in this policy. The Board should not be delegating away its authority. The procedures are under the purview of the Police Department. The Board policy, they can make recommendations, but you cannot give away your authority and responsibility by saying that they will put those into a law enforcement agency manual. That's all wrong.
Thank you so much. Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. And good morning to the rest of the board members, our BCPS family. Let me begin with some great news. I'm proud to share that Broward County Public Schools has once again earned an A rating, our second consecutive A rating in two years running, and we'll make sure we keep that A rating as we move forward year after year. Even more importantly, all of our schools are either a C, B, or A, cutting our C-rated schools in half, with over 84% being a B or an A-rated school.
That's incredible.
Yes, that deserves a round of applause. This is a tremendous achievement that reflects the dedication of our educators, school leaders, and support staff, and the collective commitment across our community to student success. Congratulations to all who made this possible. I would like to provide a brief but important update regarding the status of our federal funds and their potential impact on our schools. As you know, several critical federal education programs, Title I, Part C, Title II, Part A, Title III, Part A, Title IV, Part A, and Title IV, Part B, remain frozen by the U.S. Department of Education. These funds support essential services such as professional development, English language learner programs, academic enrichment, and after-school programming. Due to the timing of the current federal freeze, we were not able to adjust our budgets accordingly. We're currently relying on carry-forward dollars to support staff funded by these programs temporarily, but that coverage will only extend for about two months before we begin to see significant impacts on our fund balance. If the frozen funds are not released in the coming weeks, I will return to the Board with a plan of action, which may include changes to staffing levels. These funding delays not only affect personnel, but also jeopardize the services and supports of our students that they receive each day. We continue to advocate for the immediate release of these funds. We are also thankful to our federal delegation for their efforts, including a formal letter urging the U.S. Department of Education to release the funds. On a more encouraging note, the Title IV-B funds that support our 21st century community learning centers were released this past Friday. It's a positive step, though we're still awaiting word for the remaining programs. Finally, I would like to conclude on a positive note. Our team has been working nonstop this summer to ensure we are ready for a strong and successful school year. We're excited to welcome our teachers and our students back to our campuses and to the district. Now I'd like to ask Beacon to roll the video for this month's Best of BCPS. Take it away, Beacon. All right, I will now turn it over to Landing, our student advisor, for a quick update on a special project we're collaborating on.
Thank you, Dr. Hepburn, and I'm going to apologize to Ms. Paul and our construction team for any of the wrong terminology and construction that I used, but I do want to share that I'll be filming a question-and-answer session with Superintendent Hepburn on the benefits of the Broward County Public Schools SMART program and the amazing impacts it's had on our schools. Last week, I had the opportunity to visit some of our schools where our construction projects are underway, including Deerfield Beach High School, Daniel Elementary, and MacArthur High School, to get an inside look at the recent upgrades and to see the amazing impacts that these investments have had for our students. I want to thank our AECOM team and our subcontractors who are doing amazing work at those schools advocating for having these investments for our students. We invite members of the community who follow the BCPS SMART program to submit questions for me to ask Dr. Hepburn using direct messaging on Instagram and Facebook, or send your questions to smartfutures@browardschools.com. We'll be releasing reels on social media each day to promote the upcoming Q&amp;A, and you may even see a sneak peek of the construction going on at your school. The question-and-answer session will be recorded and released on YouTube, YouTube Shorts, and all other BCPS SMART social media platforms. The SMART program is doing amazing things for our students, and I'm excited to talk with Dr. Hepburn about those investments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I believe Mrs. Leonardi has a question for the superintendent.
Yes, thank you. Regarding the federal funds freeze, if those funds are not released, what legal avenues do we have to recoup those funds?
Yes, I don't think we have. Go ahead, Ms. Batista. You're the lawyer. I'll let her. You said legal, we'll pass it on to the lawyer. Go ahead, Ms. Batista.
Thank you, Dr. Hepburn. So we potentially do have some ways of filing a claim against the federal government to try and release those funds. Currently, there are other states that have already filed an action against the federal government trying to get those funds released. And while there is no nationwide injunction process any longer available since the last Supreme Court decision on that particular issue, there is, one of the things that that lawsuit is requesting is the relief that is called vacature. And what that does is that it would vacate the decision of the administrative agency to not release the funds, and so that would have an impact nationwide. So pending that potential relief in that case, then the whole entire nation would be affected by that lawsuit.
Okay, thank you. Just speaking for myself, whatever avenues we have legally or however else, I would encourage us to use that, those tools in our toolkit to recoup the funds that were promised to us to support our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Noted. Yep, okay. Thank you. Next, we'll have some update reports. Broward Education Foundation.
Good morning, everybody. James Knapp, Broward Education Foundation. Just a few updates. We have started, I think I had mentioned this before, our back-to-school drive for us to be out in the community collecting school supplies for our teachers in need so we can place those at our supply center in Pompano. So we're really excited about that. It's going really, really well. Part of that drive is an adopt-to-school program. We've already gotten over 20 schools adopted, and what that means is we're able to give backpacks and supplies to those students of need in those schools. Sometimes they're selected by the actual donors themselves, so we're really excited about that. And thank you to those individuals, many of them who are in this room that would be embarrassed if I called them out, who are adopting schools themselves. It means a lot to us, but it also means a tremendous amount to those students. A couple of things that I can't necessarily get specific on, I was hoping the release would be out before this morning, but we've been working diligently on a few grants in partnership with BCPS team and Guy Brumoha and his team, and it's been an amazing process. But there's been a few things that have come up and just landed last week. It hasn't been made public yet, but it'll be 1.1 million, the other one will be half a million, and the other one will be about 50,000. So that literally had all kind of culminated last week. It wasn't just a really hard-working week, it was just all kind of came together, but really excited about that. The foundation's continuing to be committed to the community and, you know, providing that, the leverage for partnerships between the community and the school district. We have been working, I have personally been working hand-in-hand with Lori Canning, who's been amazing. Her and I really working on this community partnerships piece and doing it the way that we know that the community deserves, but also in shedding the light on Broward County Public Schools the way that we deserve. So just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate everybody here. Like I said, all of you guys always support, so we're really, really grateful for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We did receive a written report from PTA and PTSAs, so that's in the email. And next, we have BTU.
So Anna Fusco-Bauer, Teachers Union, good afternoon. Happy birthday, their school board member, Mr. Severa. I heard, I heard. Thirty-five, really. You just want to look older, be older, to fit in that role. A couple things. I'm going to just go right to the chase, because I know it's not till next week, but since I get union time, I'm going to talk about it, with the cell phones. I know you guys have been conversations about it, tinkering about it, looking to put cell phones back in the hands of the high school students during lunchtime. I've spoke to many of you, I haven't reached all of you. I know you all have your individual understanding of why it would be better. I'm frankly hearing it's because you can't control the narrative, that, you know, admin has a hard time, you know, making sure that the students comply. If we start down that path, you're going to have to do it with everything else. What's going to be next? We can't control vaping? We're going to allow vaping? We can't control dress code? We're going to allow them dress any way they want? We're going to allow them to be menaces because we can't control them? I believe our admin are doing the best that they can and working through kinks because the band was new. And we do know that things have changed for the better. Fighting has gone down, purposeful fighting, not being social, and engaging more with their fellow students, engaging with the teachers, engaging with lots of things. I bet the engagement got better at home because the phones are put away. We've got them six hours. You know, when these kids are in the arts, when they're in the bands, when they're in the sports, their coaches aren't allowing them to have their phones. I have tons of friends that their kids play sports in school and outside of school, and I never see a phone in the dugout. I never see a phone on the football field. I never see a phone on the soccer field. I don't see a phone in their instruments. So I think we can handle that our students can still have those 30 minutes of lunch. Encourage them to nutrition themselves, encourage them to socialize, encourage them to go reach out to talk to somebody if they need to do that. And if we need to get more social-emotional things happening in our schools, dive deep into our referendum money that is delegated for social, emotional, mental health, and hire more people if you feel that we're not getting to them. Because I cannot hear that we're not doing our jobs in our schools to reach our students for social-emotional components. That is unacceptable. We have a referendum that we worked hard to make sure the funding is there. And our teachers are seeing more positive interactions, student on student, student on them, with the cell phones being put away. We're not saying that we want to stifle our students. I think that we can blossom them for the six hours that we have them, much better than saying, "Sure, we can handle it, just take the cellphone." You're opening the doors to say, "We can't handle it," and I don't believe we can't. I think that I've grown myself to build better relationships with our admin in our schools, I've built better relationships to talk to people on superintendent's cabinet, and I'm hearing that things have gotten better, and it's only year one. Don't go backwards yet. Let's see what we can do moving forward of continuing this path to bring better engagement and encouragement from our students to show that they are learning and they're here to do the job that their parents are sending them to school for, and that is to get the best quality education. We're in a district, again, we want to stay that way. We can't keep making excuses, and we don't want power struggles with our students and our educators. So it's just lunch, but it's that anticipation getting to lunch, then it's that anticipation getting back from lunch. They got their phone out early. "Oh, just one more minute, just one more minute." Listen, phones, they can have it at home with their parents. If their parents don't want to talk with them at dinner, let them use their phones. If their parents don't want to talk with them and they're out to dinner in a mall, let them do it there. They have 18 hours more a day to figure it out, to get that social media input, and go look at some real data. Look at real data. Seventy-six percent of the nation says cellphone bans are helping. Forty-four percent are saying total bans are helping. It's grown from 36% to 44%. I'm going to get off that. Natalie, stay out of our bargaining unit stuff. We negotiate our contract with our school district. You stay in your community, we'll stay with our bargaining unit. There's policies and so forth. We're getting things done. When language comes out that needs to be changed, the district is committed to coming and talking about it. I'm going to go into negotiations of talking about, we're ready to sit down at the table to talk about what you guys can do. I heard you saying there's some strong situations going off the budget. You got a new CFO that's coming in, taking over. We know there's a large expectation. I get it, but taking over some damage that was done from our former CFO. So let's call it what it is. I said it for years. So let's get back to work, schools in two weeks with our teachers, three weeks with our students, and we're looking to have a positive, amazing year. Let's do this.
Thank you very much. Next up is Lisa Maxwell from BPAA.
Thank you, Madam Chair, school board superintendent and staff. My name is Lisa Maxwell. I represent the Broward Principals and Assistants Association, and I'm here today in support of BB1, which is school board member Thompson's item relating to the school meal program. I want to commend her and thank her. This is a very kind and thoughtful item. We have a number of students who, for whatever reason, either don't qualify, their parents don't fill out the forms, they end up not having money for lunch or breakfast. And it's really incumbent upon us to make sure that students are fed, because when they eat, they learn. When they don't eat, it's very difficult to teach. But also just the human side of children going hungry. And so this small amount of money will allow principals to have some ability to cover when students come to school and they don't have money for their lunch. It helps principals not have to go out and fundraise or find other sources. There is no money in the budget that they can go to to cover these costs. So I appreciate the item, and I thank you for bringing that forward. Just to also briefly touch on cell phones, you should have received an email from me. I think part of the issue here is that people just don't understand operationally how lunchtime works in a high school. So, for example, many high schools have three separate lunch periods during which 1,000 students each lunch are having lunch, and they're spread out all over, and you've got five or six staff people to monitor 1,000 students who may be getting into scuffles, maybe having other issues. It tends to take security off of watching the perimeter fences and doing other things that security needs to be doing because they're on alert for cell phones. They end up confiscating several hundred cell phones per lunch period, and then they have to take those phones, sit and do all the paperwork to fill out for each phone, who it was confiscated from, et cetera. And that takes time off of our security personnel, which I don't think is particularly well-spent doing that. So it's lunch, it's an opportunity to have a brief interaction with their phone, but the reality is, is that it is impossible to fully enforce a policy when you have 1,000 students and a small handful of people to enforce the policy. So if the district wants to bring on more people, then it is certainly enforceable, but I don't see that happening under our funding scenario. So that's a serious consideration and the reason why the organization took the position that they did. We always want to be enforcing policies, but we also want to tell you, when the resources are such that these policies are extremely difficult, if not impossible, to consistently enforce. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, this will be the part of the meeting where we will consider all the open agenda items. The following items have been identified for discussion. AA2, BB1, which we'll take first, as it's a special order at 11:00 a.m., Double D1, 3, and 4, FF1, JJ6, 8, 9, 19, and 20, MM1 and 2, 004, 8, 11, 12, 13, 17, 18, 19, 21, and RR1. At this time, may the chair have a motion and a second to pass the open items that have not been pulled for discussion, which include AA1, DD2, JJ1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 21, and 22, 001, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 14, 15, 16, 20, 22, 23, 24, and 25, Double P1, 2, 3, and 4, and Double T1.
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Zeeman, seconded by Mrs. Alhadev. Are there any registered speakers on the items that were not pulled for discussion?
Yes, ma'am. DD2 and Double P1, Natalie Lynch Walsh for both items.
Okay.
Dr. Natalie Lynch Walsh, Plantation, Florida. All right, DD2 is Atlantic West and the follow-up audit of property and inventory control back in March as the duly-elected chair of the district's audit committee. I did an audit committee report that pointed out that historically, and again, I apologize for it taking 10 years to notice, but it was something that's so basic, it doesn't seem possible, there's no reconciliation done because it's not required of physical inventory. And per state law, it is the custodian of physical inventory is your superintendent. So you cannot have the chief auditor's office, and this has been the case the entire time I've been volunteering, and presumably it was like this because the chief auditor's office used to report to the superintendent. But that needs to come off of them. And also in state statute, the CFO, it is an accounting function to establish the internal controls over physical inventory. So I hope this gets fixed because this is really kind of huge. It's very significant that you do, there is no process or requirement in this district what was basically serving as inventory reconciliation were the property and inventory audits, as opposed to the staff performing a reconciliation where you take what the system says should be in your inventory and compare it to what's actually in your inventory and then reconcile the differences. And I'm speaking as a former accountant who did this on a regular basis. And I'm speaking as a former accountant who did this on a regular basis. It is astonishing to me that that was not part of the process. But the people, the positions responsible for the internal controls over this area are, one, the custodian, who is the superintendent, and, two, the CFO, not the chief auditor. They are responsible for auditing. They cannot be responsible for creating the internal controls of a function that they must then audit. This is all in the report from March. That was DD-2. And I think if PP-3 is the staff policy, the only thing I want to say there is, please do not approve this yet. Your advisories are in the middle of being dogged, and that impacts staff because that's at the school level. So there could be things that are going to impact that policy. Or if you approve it, you're going to have to approve it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. So next, we are going to take... Oh, all those in favor of approving the open agenda items that have not been pulled for discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those who oppose, say no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, may the Chair have a motion in a second on item BB-2.
So moved?
BB-1, I'm sorry.
BB-1's moved?
It's been moved by Dr. Zeeman, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Are there any public comments on BB-1?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have three public speakers, Dr. Natalie Lynch Walsh, followed by Lisa Maxwell to close us out, Elijah Manley.
Dr. Natalie Lynch Walsh, Plantation, Florida. Again, I fully support this item. I'm kind of surprised that a board member had to bring it and that this wouldn't be a recommendation from the superintendent and staff because the meals are being cut off all of a sudden, cold turkey after a certain point. And there are absolutely kids that cannot pay for their own lunches. And I echo all of Ms. Maxwell's sentiments a little bit earlier. A couple other things, please have someone monitor meal participation rates. Because yes, if kids are hungry, then they don't do well. And when we've looked at meal participation rates in advisory, they're much lower than you would expect. But I don't think it's anyone's job to monitor the percentage of kids that are participating in meals. The letter with eligibility, there's a parent letter that, for all the messaging that is going out about signing up for these benefits, that letter doesn't seem to be part of it. And so you could have people completing an application who have no idea they're not going to qualify, or vice versa. And so, but I appreciate you bringing this forward, and I hope this is enough money, and certainly they can move it around to wherever it needs to be. But this has been a problem the entire time my kids were in school. And then finally, on this issue, for the love of God, whoever created that pop-up to come up every time you launch a new page, could you please stop it and just do it once? Because I can't even use the website currently, and that might have been the goal, but please stop. But I fully support this item.
Thank you. I do believe Lisa Maxwell left, so next up is Mr. Manley.
Good morning. Elijah Manley, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Speaking here today, not just as a resident of Broward County, but as someone who once sat in our public schools hungry, struggling, facing homelessness with my family and my siblings. I am someone who had to shower at the beach before the sun came out before school, and me and my siblings relied on school breakfast and school lunch as the only meals we would get that day. So this isn't theoretical for me. I don't have to take a guess. This is personal. It was my reality, and it is the reality of thousands of other people today in Broward County, people who are struggling to meet ends, be in this very uncertain economy right now. And that's why I'm precisely urging this board to take action and meet the moment to wipe out all school meal debt in this district and find a way to re-implement universal free lunch for all students no matter their income. We really shouldn't means test hunger. We shouldn't shame children over whether their parents can afford to pay for a meal or for a meal to eat. And we absolutely should not be in the business of putting working-class families in debt, especially at a young age, putting these kids in debt. There's always a few people who would say, "There's not enough money, there's not enough resources." But let's be honest with ourselves and let's level with the people. It's about priorities. And we've seen the priorities of this far-right Trump-Desantis regime and how they've got public education slash funding and use our kids as pawns in political culture wars. But even in the face of all of that cruelty, the nasty politics that we see of this administration, both in Tallahassee and Washington, we have a choice to make in Broward County. We can either bow to their agenda, or we can stand for our own values. We must stand for our own values in Broward County. And one of our values must be that no child in Broward schools should be hungry. No child, period, point-blank, blunt force. We must find the money. We must make it work. If we have the funds for other initiatives, for salaries, for any fancy stuff, we have the funds to feed our kids. If we have to go to the private sector and find a way to make it work, we must do it. I see this agenda item that, remember Rebecca Thompson put forward as a step in the right direction, as something we must do because it is in our value as Broward County to do it. Feeding children is not charity. It's our moral obligation to make sure all of our kids are fed, that all of our students are able to go to school and focus on their education and not have an empty stomach. I'm here today because when I was a child, someone believed I was worth a full stomach and a daily meal. Let's believe in our kids. Let's believe in our families. Let's do the right thing by passing this item, and please not get complacent. Fight back against this administration. Class action lawsuits are still allowed currently. I don't know what's going to happen with that in the future. Find a way to get the resources we need and sue, 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 sue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, board discussion. Let's see, well, since Ms. Thompson brought the item, why don't you start us off?
Thank you, Chair. So first, I want to take a minute to shout out our staff, Ms. Mary Mulder and her other staff for being incredibly helpful in crafting this... Incredibly helpful in crafting this item and also in informing our communities about the meal applications. The last time I met with Ms. Mulder, our meal applications are up, so I think that's very promising. Also, just the increased outreach, I understand that the pop-up button is slightly annoying, but it does reinforce what is happening. I also just wanted to kind of recap the conversations we've had about this item at the past workshop where it came up and our board meeting. My colleagues seemed to share in my hesitation to end the universal meal program, and there were concerns about how this would affect our children. And there seemed to be the understanding that maybe the Broward Education Foundation or PTOs could just step in and solve this issue for us. I really hesitate to put that on them. For one, the Broward Education Foundation would not be able to fund this meal debt relief program equitably throughout our district. Not every school has a PTO or a PTA. Furthermore, the schools that have PTOs and PTAs, a lot of them don't have the capacity to fundraise for this need, or they're already fundraising for another need that they're trying to support the school's principal on. So what this item does specifically, it funds $500 at each of our schools. So why $500? Because I met with Ms. Mulder, and that is the amount that she recommended to cover. So it is based on her data that she has. Why is it that it's not just in certain areas or certain schools? And that is because poverty and financial struggles don't know a zip code. There is a point in this item as well where we will be evaluating it come January to make sure that the funding is being used appropriately, that the schools that might not need it or do have an active PTA or do have municipalities coming in to help fund this, we will be able to see and reevaluate at that point. And then this item also addresses middle schools and high school students because currently high school students actually cannot charge a meal. If you looked in the additional information, high school students are not eligible to charge any meals to the principal account. Middle schools, it's based on principals. So the principals have been informed of this item coming up. They're working on a strategy to make sure that our high school students are able to access the support if needed. Finally, it allows our students to have the dignity of choice at lunch. So that way, if they don't have money, they're not given a wild butter sandwich, which I still have not been able to figure out what exactly it is. I think it's a nut-free butter. But it gives them the ability to have that choice, that dignity, and also gives us time for the principal or school counselor or school social worker to meet with them, to understand what might be happening at home and what resources they might be eligible for. So like I said, at the last workshop in the meeting we've had, all of us seemed to have a consensus that this is an issue. But I was left with this feeling that there wasn't really anything we could do about it because we don't have the budget and we can't go back to universal meal programs. And that really didn't sit well with me. So in talking to Ms. Mulder, this is kind of the concept we came up in. And I know that funding is always going to be an issue, and I just really want to emphasize that this item is less than 0% of our budget. In fact, it is about .00188% of our budget. And I just really hope that my colleagues will support this item and agree with me that worrying about their next meal should be the last thing on our students' minds. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dr. Holness.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board Member Thompson, thank you for bringing this item forward. I think it's a great item. I do have a few statements and some questions. So just for the sake of the public to understand where we are, because the public, many members of the public do listen to us. So Dr. Hepburn, can you walk us through where we were pre-COVID, during COVID, and where we are now? Why are we at this point?
Dr. Hepburn?
Thanks for the question. I have Ms. Mulder come up and walk us through that.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, School Board. Dr. Hepburn and the public. Prior to COVID, we were functioning under the program that we are actually transitioning back to. And that program has been around since 1946, National School Lunch Program. It was due to the fact that during World War II, we found that some of our men that were coming back from combat were not physically and nutritionally fit. So we've been following that program since 2019. When COVID hit, the National School Lunch Program under the Department of USDA had several waivers that were into effect. And those waivers had to do with the fact that the students were not actually in school but were at home, and we were distributing meals through a car line. The reimbursement increased during that point of time so that all students were receiving meals free. So the reimbursement for free meals is much higher than the reimbursement for paid or for reduced meals. The reimbursement went on for several years during the COVID pandemic. In addition to that, the department applied for supply chain funding increases, and that had to do with the fact that the price of food was increasing during COVID. Both of those, supply chain funding and the COVID reimbursement, did end after the pandemic. We were fortunate in our department, due to operations and the way that we structure what we do in the department, that we had additional funds that were set aside, and our fund balance increased to about $65 million. USDA states that we can only have a fund balance of not more than three months. So we needed to take those monies in very quick fashion and help our school community. The mission in school food service is to feed kids so that we can support education. So for the past several years, we were using that excess fund balance to support the pilot program of universal free, year one, and then year two. As those funds are depleted, due to the fact that the reimbursement has ended for all free students being fed in the supply chain, we come back to the fact that we're operating in the manner we were functioning under prior to COVID. So that brings us back to what we did between 1946, basically, and 2019. The CEP program is still around in districts. We receive something called April Data, and that's every April. And that data has to do with the amount of students that are directly certified through the state, meaning those are students that are on SNAP, TANF, migrant, homeless, and Head Start. Those numbers in our district have decreased. At one point prior to COVID, our total free and reduced balance was about 71%. When I say balance, I mean percentage. We're down to about 41% free and reduced, based on the state data that came to us. So that being said, when you work out percentages and you use formulas, it's not cost-effective for us to continue CEP in all schools. The universal free schools that were year one and year two obviously never even hit that CEP standard because they were low in free-reduced percentages.
Okay, so prior to COVID, for the sake of the general public listening, who received free lunch and who did not?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question, Dr. Holness. So the meal benefit application process was in effect at that point in time. Families would need to complete a meal benefit application. If they were approved, and the application is based on household income and number in the family, there is a structure sent by USDA of the structure for how much money is required for those homes, whether they qualify for free, reduced, or paid. We have an office or a department, I should say, within food service that receives those applications. They evaluate them based on a software program, and the family is then entitled to free if they qualify, given those guidelines, reduced if they meet those guidelines. If they do not meet those guidelines, again, it's based on number in the household and family income, then the application is denied, meaning that they're a paid status. So we are reverting back to that program of collecting all the meal benefit applications.
Okay, so when the application is denied because they did not meet the required household income, those students will not get free lunch. They have to pay, correct?
You are correct.
Okay, so Dr. Hepburn, I have a few questions for you. Is it possible that students or parents who may apply and may not qualify for free lunch still cannot afford lunch?
Dr. Hepburn?
I'm not completely understanding every personal situation for families. Yes, that could be a possibility, depending on how much income they're receiving versus how much their expenditures are for their homes and cars and things like that.
So there could be income levels that we established, but there are other situations within families whereby they may not meet our eligibility requirement, but they still cannot afford to provide lunch for their children. Isn't that possible?
That's possible.
Okay, so in that case, those kids, under those circumstances, will not be fed properly with a full meal, correct?
They would not be eligible for the free or reduced lunch if they don't meet the specific qualifications that we have to abide by.
Okay, so not meeting our qualification, as you mentioned, and there could be other circumstances to which burden a family, even though they did not meet our qualifications, they still cannot afford lunch. So with those students, they don't have funding for lunch, right? So those students could possibly go hungry within our schools?
Correct. They don't have funding to pay for our lunch. I do want to be careful to understand, like, old school, some kids actually brought their lunch to school, right? So we can't forget about that part. My kids bring their lunch to school then. So I just want to make sure that we're not painting a picture that if you're not eligible, that you can't afford, you can't eat and all that. So I know we're trying to work through this, but some kids do actually bring their lunch to school as a cost-saving measure for families that are in certain predicaments.
Correct. But there are some families who still cannot afford to provide lunch for a child to bring to school.
Yep, I understand. Yes.
Correct. Okay, so with that being said, do you believe that an allocation of $500 as presented in this item for each school will be able to remedy or help remedy any such issue?
I think it can assist in the vein of the item that Ms. Thompson just spoke about, utilizing data to actually see down the road if it is being utilized or exhausted. And that'd kind of give us a litmus test to see where our schools or our students are when it comes to the amount of kids that actually need that type of support.
Okay, so Board Member Thompson, I appreciate the item. I would love to see it actually goes a little bit further. And here's why I'm saying that. Since we can all agree that there could be situations where a kid is not eligible and still cannot afford to have lunch, my question then is, when a school exhaust is 500, it does... it doesn't mean that the issue is gone, right? Because there are now students who are not able to be fed because the 500 is exhausted. So, Board Member Thompson, I would like, if you don't mind, that the motion include giving our superintendent the latitude to add additional $500 funding to specific schools, should those funding be exhausted at those schools?
That, that sounds good to me. That's also one of the reasons that I wanted the superintendent back in January, or future January, to bring back a report on how this money is being utilized. Because I also think that this gives us an opportunity for Broward Education Fund because there's supposed to be a donate button on each of our schools' websites, which isn't up yet. Just flagging that.
Work in progress.
Work in progress. The website is beautiful. And it also gives times for PTOs that are able to fundraise, to raise money into these accounts. But I'm fine with that addition.
Great. So, this would provide the superintendent with the discretion and the latitude to increase the funding in $500 increments to schools that may not, that have exhausted the funding and did not receive anything else through any other source. So, I would like to recommend that friendly amendment to your motion.
Second.
Hey, any public comment on the motion?
The motion was to increase it? Yes, absolutely support, just in case 500 isn't enough.
This is on a motion, so I can speak again, right?
Yes, permanent.
Perfect. I really do appreciate that. I didn't have time to include that in my comments, Dr. Holness, that, I mean, 500 is not really a lot of money. It's going to go quickly. And just setting an imaginary income number and saying if you make more than this number without considering the fact that some people might just be left out. So, that's the problems with, that is a problem with means testing in general, is somebody's always going to be left out. And so, if we could find a way, even if there's a wiggle room and they're like, okay, if you make $500 more than this imaginary income level that we, we've, we have, you can still get the lunch. You can still qualify, right? It's the same thing with, like, food stamps or, you know, essential housing. If you make a penny more than the poverty level or by the income level set by the, by HUD or by SNAP, then you don't get the benefits. You don't qualify for the benefits. And I think that's kind of ridiculous. You know, if it's a penny or a dollar more, I think we can find a way to help people. So, I support that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, Board Member Discussion, Dr. Zeeman.
Thank you very much. This is a great item. It's worth talking about. I think we have to put it into the context, though, of...
Just on the motion.
I haven't even started talking yet, Chair.
Okay, I'm just reminding.
Like...
Just reminding you.
The context of this specific amendment, this motion, is really important because we need to be able to understand more than just the first-order effects of providing funds for people that don't qualify under the, don't fit under the USDA limit. The first thing that I would need to know in order to understand this motion is how much money is there in the FNS carryover from last year?
Dr. Hepburn.
Ms. Mulder.
So, if I remember correctly, we have about $36 million. That's the carryover. We, our expenses run between $11 and $12 million a month. USDA says that we cannot carry a max or more than three months over. So, we're at that three-month right now. And that covers our expenditures for food, for supplies, for salaries. So, they're always ahead.
Thank you very much. Second question, how much would it cost to do the initial item that's been put forward, the 500 per student? I know it's a projection because we're not going to know how many people show up and don't either have lunch that they brought from home or free lunch or reduced lunch, according to the USDA formula. But how much will it cost to give $500 per student and then come back to this in January?
Per school, you mean?
Nope, for Broward County.
No, per, per school.
500 per school.
It's 500 per school. You said per student.
How much will this cost?
Approximately about $112,000.
So, $120,000, just to be clear, Ms. Mulder, that would come out of the FNS account? Or that comes out of the general fund?
My understanding of this item is that it comes out of the general fund.
Okay, and, again, I have to understand the item to understand the motion, okay? What good is $500 a school going to do?
Dr. Hepburn.
I will, it will support, and the maker of the motion can actually add to this. I'm the, to support any students that may have a meal challenge for that day. I don't, it's not going to address a need every day. It's for those special circumstances.
I'm with you, but a meal is like $3 or $4, right?
Correct.
And so, this is going to buy, you know, if it's $3, it's going to buy 160 meals. We have elementary schools with 800 to 1,000 students. We have middle schools with 1,000 to 2,000 students. What is $500 a school going to do? We're going to buy 160 meals for people? Like, I don't, I don't understand the scope of this. If we want to do something, we should do something. But $500 per school isn't a thing. Like, it's real, our schools are big. Like, like, Chair, what's the average-sized elementary school in Broward County?
Dr. Hepburn.
About 600, 700, average, average size.
Okay, but we're literally, like, that might last two days of people who don't bring food and don't have money and don't qualify to get free or reduced lunch. So, what I worry about is that this is performative, that we're going to say to the public, hey, here's $500 per school, without saying, oh, that's 160 meals total, which will do nothing for the hunger of students in Broward County. That is insufficient. If we want to do something, let's do it. Let's get into the budget. Let's look at the FNS account. Let's look at the $36 million and say, how do we pay for every kid that's going to go hungry? I'm all in that. But $500 per school is not anything, right? I mean, I, I don't understand why we're doing this. If what we want to do is amend this item and say, let's not let a child go hungry in Broward County, how much will that cost? I'm in. But when you come in and say 500 per school, I think that's 160 meals. I think at middle school, the price is a little higher, like $4 a meal, right? So, it's 125 meals in middle schools. Like, this isn't, this isn't enough. Do we need to do more? Like, do we know what it would cost to stop people who come to our schools from being hungry? That's what I would like to know. And then I'd like to figure out how we find that money. Because nobody should go hungry in our schools, nobody. They can't eat. They won't learn. And there's a real need, as, as our guest speaker pointed out. You know, there is a real need out there and we ought to see if we can either eliminate the need or make a dent to the need or something. But how much would it cost to stop people from being hungry in Broward County public schools, Ms. Mulder?
So, if I could let Ms. Thompson, she explained, she did a little in her first opening, but explain how you got to the $500 because I believe it was with staff.
Thank you, Chair. It was with staff's input and discussion. Also, the alternative was doing nothing. If we remember the conversations we've had, it was going out to the public and praying and crying and hoping that they could find the money when everybody is struggling. There are nonprofits that are about to lose their funding. There are other issues that are going to open up. And this is something that, in fact, you yourself said the school board should do something at one of our meetings. And so, this is something. Do I think that is going to solve student hunger? Of course not. However, we are in a budget situation that we are trying to figure out. This brings it back in January so we can evaluate and see, maybe 500 isn't enough. There are schools that do have funds in their principal accounts because from four years ago, their PTA had the wherewithal to fundraise into money. So, some schools don't need this. What it does is it gives our principals some breathing room so they can go out and fundraise if need be. It gives BEF and our Strategic Partnership Department time to form the relationships and connections with businesses or other municipalities that might adopt our school. And it gives our staff time where if a student does need to use a charged meal to go find that student and find out what might be the issue in an elementary school. Because right now, again, in our high schools, if a high school student does not have enough money for lunch, they do not have access to the principal account because it is not funded. If you look in the additional information that was provided with this item, that is what happens. So, because of this item, where I agree, does not go far enough, but I believe it is in our budget and I believe that we can reevaluate it in January, it does solve and address issues. I hope that answers your question.
Almost.
Ms. Mulder, can you also answer Dr. Zeeman's question? I think the question is, do you know what the average, let's say, monthly overture is per school? Like, where did you come up with the $500 when you were having this discussion with Board Member Thompson?
So, thank you again for the question. The $500 was something to be able, as Ms. Thompson said, to be able to fund a temporary gap until the principal and their staff could reach out to the families and find out, did they fill out a meal benefit application? If they did, what was the status of it? The $500 came from a figure that we, myself, thought in the department would be able to set the principals up to get them started as we transitioned back and forth. Would we like it to be more than 500? Absolutely. But we needed a starting point. We were actually a little bit lower and Ms. Thompson increased it. We understand the price of the meal and how much it is per meal. At the same time, this is coming to the board, to the general fund, to fund. It would be wonderful if we could fund all students, but the money that's in the Food Service account still has to be able to cover the cost of expenses, salaries, benefits, equipment, maintenance, things like that.
Thank you. But what I asked...
I'm sorry.
Is how much would it cost to feed the children that are hungry in our schools?
We would have to calculate that. We'd have to take the $172,000. We pulled the enrollment this morning. It was $172,000. We'll have to multiply that out. Our finance manager's here. It'll just take a minute to get that.
Well, it's actually much harder than that because a whole bunch of the schools are still over the limit where they get all free and, or they all get free meals, right? Because if you're over 70% qualifying, everybody gets it. So, there's a whole bunch of schools that already get free schools, free meals. There are some others and then there's some really important analysis that needs to be done about how many are not going to be able to pay. And that's, that's just, you know, somebody's going to have to model that. What I'm concerned about is telling Broward County that we're going to set aside money for people that come to school and don't have enough to eat and then giving them enough money for 160 meals. I appreciate that that's kind of a down payment to kind of help get everybody put together. But I don't want anyone in the community to think that we're eliminating hunger in schools by allocating $112,000, you know, which is 500 per school, or even doubling that to $224,000 in Dr. Holness's motion that's on the table to say that, oh, $1,000 per school is going to help reduce hunger in Broward County. If you ask Mr. Manley in the back of the room if $1,000 a school is going to help everybody that has needs in the schools that don't qualify for the USDA, then the answer is not a chance. And so, this is, to me, you know, a difficult item. I'm happy to spend the money to do this. I'm very, I want to make sure that people understand that this is an emergency fund for either 160 or 320 meals per school. And then, you know, those same students that rely on this money to get started either have to get their application in to find out if they qualify. They have to figure out within their family about how they can get a meal taken to them. But this is a Band-Aid. This is not a solution that says we're going to make sure that kids who are hungry in our schools get fed. That's where I want to be. And so, if today all we do is provide $1,000 per school, I get that. But I still need this answer at some point, once you have time to do the real analysis. And I'm not, then let me just go to a separate topic. Why is this coming out of the general fund instead of out of FNS?
Dr. Hepburn.
Ms. Mulder.
Sorry. I'll just answer your question about the financial portion of it. So, we had calculated for your workshop and gave out information about how much it would cost to feed all the children free in addition to those children that already get free meals by qualifying. So, it's 12, it's $12 million, okay? To feed the rest of the people, the rest of the students, that would be currently qualified as paid or reduced, and we would pick up that amount. So, the problem with the Food Service covering all the costs of this, we've lost, I think it's 16 million this year that we just closed on. 16 million, and then that just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger as we go along. So, we lost 12 million the year before. This year that we just closed, it's 16 million. And we are projecting right now, based on our budget, to lose 19 million for the next school year. It just keeps going down and down, is what happens to the fund balance. There isn't going to be one pretty soon. So, once we use 19 million, you know, we're talking about, about 12, 13 million left for the rest of the remaining years ahead of us.
And I appreciate the math. But the school board statutorily has to spend the money. And it should be an option to fund this $1,000 per school with FNS because that's $224,000, I think. And if you think losing $19 million in FNS is a problem, you should go talk to Ms. Johnson about what's going on with the general fund. So, those decisions should come to the board for, here's how much it costs, here's the benefit, and here's the options from which accounts we can take it from. FNS also has to fund salaries for everybody that works in food nutrition, and they're dramatically too low. Mr. Manley would tell you about that, too. You know, we ask people to come to work for us at $17 and $18 an hour. It's not okay. You can't live here at those salaries. So, I understand the complexity of this, but I don't want to go bear hunting with a buggy whip. And that's what $112,000 does. It's a Band-Aid. It's a small Band-Aid. And if we want to double that to give $1,000 per school, that's great. But it's not, it's still not enough. We need to figure out how to make sure that if, if families are not sending to feed the kids, we've got to figure out how to fill that gap. And I don't think it's 12 million because 12 million was the cost when we told everybody that they would get free meals. This is a different program where if someone walks in, hasn't qualified under USDA standards but still doesn't have food, then they would get food paid. So, it's a lot less than 12 million. So it's a lot less than 12 million. And I would ask you to answer my question sometime in the near future. What would it cost to feed the kids that are hungry and do not qualify for USDA per year? And it's, it's not the $12 million answer because that's the cost of feeding everybody.
If, if I may, Dr. Zeeman, you're asking a great question. I don't think we're to that point with that data yet, right? So we're reverting back to a program that was pre-COVID. Parents and families are signing up for free or reduced lunch once the school year starts. There's already a 30-day cushion anywhere from FNS paying for, for meals. So after that 30-day, we'll have better data to understand how many of our students are qualified for free reduced lunch, how many of our students are actually taking advantage of the supplemental dollars that the principals may have to pay for food, and then we can have a better answer about how much does it cost in addition to what we're doing to feed all our hungry students in Broward County. I don't think we can answer that question yet because we're reverting back to a program pre-COVID, just getting off of, feeding everybody at no cost. They're going through the application process. Let that happen. Let the first 30 days happen to provide that, that, that buffer of folks that probably did not get the message over the summer about filling out that application, and we're feeding them for free for that first 30 days. After that, we'll have better numbers, especially in addition to the request that some students are having to be fed, but they did not qualify. And I think we'll have better, better data. And if we don't have the, the best data, we can certainly send out a, a survey to those that did not qualify to see if we can get some additional information.
And, and I appreciate that. There are other districts, though, that do this. There are other districts who pay for lunch when a kid walks in, has no packed lunch from home, doesn't qualify or hasn't turned in the application, and they're walking through the line, the district pays to feed them. So maybe we can find some other districts that do this and get some estimates of what it would cost here. I'm persuaded that nobody should come to a Broward County public school and not be fed. But this won't do that. This will just, I mean, one, we have a 30-day cushion already, right? So everyone's going to get fed for 30 days. Superintendent just told us that. This amount of money is going to pay, and I'm in support of Dr. Holness's amendment. I think a thousand's a much better start. It's a slightly bigger Band-Aid. But, but still, that's going to give us 320 meals for a school, and that doesn't solve the hunger problem. And, and to me, I would like to know how we're going to solve the hunger problem. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I just need to clarify because I believe Dr. Zeeman is, is misinterpreting the amendment that I presented, and I just want to clarify that.
Okay, quick.
Okay. So it's not an additional 500. It's given this superintendent the latitude to, to have $500 increments as needed for specific schools. So it could go beyond 1,000, it could be 1,500, it could be 2,000. It's given him that latitude, and he's going to update us according to Board Member Thompson's motion in January. So we'll have better numbers then, and we'll better understand, based upon that information, where we need to go forward as far as what you're asking. But I believe the amendment addresses your issue because it's increments of 500 on an as-needed basis for specific schools.
Yeah. And the reason I don't support the item like that is it takes authority away from the school board, who statutorily has to approve spending. So I don't want to give the superintendent the authorities that the law gives to this board and just give him a blank check to keep spending money with, without coming back to us for approval. So as you have stated, restated your motion, I cannot support it because it takes authority away from the board to allocate funds, and, and we have to figure out how to pay FNS. We have to figure out how to pay educators. We have to meet a lot of bills. And giving the superintendent not just the authority, but the pressure to solve this problem is not what I would be in favor of. I thought you were just going up from 500 to 1,000.
It gives them the latitude so we can ensure that every kid who is hungry is fed. That's the intent.
Thank you. And again, remember, we're just on the amendment, so Mrs. Aladoff.
Yes, thank you. So I appreciate, Ms. Thompson, you bringing this item forward. I, I do agree it doesn't go far enough, and there's some, I think, kind of gaps of information that this board needed in the item to better make decisions regarding the increase in funding. So some questions that I had before this item came forward was, I wanted to know, what did we spend on alternative meals before COVID?
We're just on the amendment. I'm going to come back to you.
I, I understand, but I can't vote on this without knowing all this information. It all comes together.
Okay. Dr. Hepburn.
Ms. Mulder. Before COVID, for, I'm assuming the students that needed a meal but didn't qualify and we paid for it, do you have a figure on per year?
So, Dr. Hepburn, thank you. Ms. Aladoff, I do not have a, a number on that. The adult or the alternate meals were handled by the school principals. So in that case, you could have a school that had PTA or PTO donations, business donations. So that was occurring at that time. In addition to that, principals had the opportunity to pay the $2 out of a principal account, whether it was their vending money or however they worked it in their budget, or would they supply it an alternative meal. And that alternative meal could have been a cheese sandwich, fruit and milk. It could have been a cheese sandwich and just fruit. It could have just been a jelly sandwich. Those, those were the alternative meals at that point in time. Again, we're going back to 19, or 2019, 20. So at that point in time, there was no one-to-one meal exchange that if you were having a charged meal in all schools, because at that point, the principals had the discretion to say, we're going to have the alternative meal, again, of the cheese sandwich and the fruit, or we're going to fund that meal with $2 from the money that our school raised through the PTA. So it was different at every school level. It was not consistent. That was left up to the principals.
Okay. So that's really important information because if we knew how much, how many alternative meals were given at a school, we would know some type of average. So the, and, and just, so we're all talking the same numbers. Is it $3 a lunch for elementary, $3.35 for middle school, and $3.50 for high school for a lunch?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and then a reduced-priced lunch is 40 cents per meal, correct?
Correct.
40 cents. Okay. And just to clarify, that no Broward County public school student will go hungry. They will get a meal called the alternative meal, that we're calling it. There's no stigma attached to it. They don't get a different colored tray or something like that. They'll get a, a sandwich, they'll get a fruit or a vegetable, and they will get milk. So no student goes hungry, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Point of order. I thought we said that they don't get that at high school.
Can you clarify, Ms. Mulder?
So according to the, the board agenda item, this 500 be, would be available for all students, and they would have their own meal selection, meaning they could take, in a high school, they could take the slice of pizza, or they could take the sandwich.
Right. But what Dr. Zeeman is asking is, do high school kids, do they qualify to get an alternative meal?
According to the current procedure in food service, no. It has always been that if a student needed to charge in a high school, it was the discretion of the principal. Because what had happened is we had high school students that were charging, and they would not pay back.
Okay. So I think that's the number first problem.
That's where, yeah. Point of order also, the question, though, was, do they get a meal? Not could they charge it? I think what he was asking is, do they get the cheese sandwich, the fruit and the milk in high school? Not about charging, but no one goes hungry. They may not like the cheese, but everyone, if they couldn't pay, has the option, even in high school, to, that's what he's asking.
So prior to COVID, there was no alternate meal set up in high schools, unless the principal of that specific school set it up. It was not saying that every high school had this meal set up. It was up to the discretion of the principal for an alternative meal, because at that point, the charges, when high school students were allowed to charge, they were not paying back.
Okay. So that's, Dr. Hepburn, I think that needs to be fixed. High schools should be able to get an alternative meal. So therefore, all students in Broward County public schools will get fed lunch regardless of anything. My next question is, if it's reduced price is 40 cents per meal, how much would it cost to beef up the alternative meal? So say, make it a turkey sandwich instead of a cheese sandwich?
Dr. Hepburn.
Ms. Mulder, I could, the, the reduced price, you guys get reimbursed for the total cost minus the 40, 40 cents, correct? But if you can answer Ms. Aladoff's question.
Right. So we'd have to calculate that, the difference between the cheese sandwich and the turkey sandwich or something else. We'll be able to do that. The, the question on the reduced student, so the reduced student still has the same option for all the meal selections, they just pay 40 cents.
Right. I guess where I'm going with this, I'm trying to figure out how we can create a more better alternative, right?
So instead of cheese, how much would it cost us to offer a turkey sandwich?
Turkey, turkey and fruit and milk, something to that. Yeah, we'd have to cost that out.
And less stigma.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. So I think we can work on the alternative meal package and, and would like to know what the financial impact of that would be. And then as far as the FNS account, I would like to better understand legally, are we allowed to ask for this funding request to come from the FNS account?
Ms. Batista.
I think that's a question better answered by either the CFO or...
Or Ms. Mulder. But from my understanding, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Mulder, you, the FNS fund balance has to be at a specific amount, and anything that encroaches on that will get you outside of that specific amount and possibly some, some compliance issues associated with it.
If I could, again, just to respond to the question, thank you, Superintendent Hepburn. The fund balance that three months, again, is for operating costs to continue operating in the department. As far as it goes for money coming out of the food service account to pay for meals, the food service department has been doing that for the past two years. So that's what we've been taking, those excess funds, to deplete that balance, and that is allowable under the USDA guidelines. We go through the FLDOA, we confirm every year that we're going on a pilot year one, pilot year two, but we must have enough money in our account to be able to operate the department without going to the board saying that we need money for salaries or for insurance or for equipment or for food. Keep in mind that this first month, food service is still picking up the cost during this transitional period. So we not only have done that for the past two, two and a half years coming back, but we're also doing it during the transitional period.
So beyond the 30 days, does the food and nutrition service account have enough money to pay for this BBI, BB item or the amended BB item? And I think is, is the specific question. Do you, and can it pay? Can it do that? Does it have enough money to do that for the year? And can you do that? Is it allowable?
So right now, we are transitioning to the meal benefit application process. So we would have students that are eligible or categorically approved, and then you're saying the remaining students that did not complete an application, that are not approved to pick up their, the cost of their meals for the remainder of the year, correct?
No, not, not that, the $500 that's
Oh, the 500?
Yes.
Do, is there enough money in the account? There's about 36 million in the account. Again, that leaves us at the max that we can carry. You know, my goal is to be able to have that money in there in case we have a hurricane. A hurricane or a tropical storm can cost the department up to $8 million, and that's because the contract states that employees are all paid during an emergency situation, and we lose revenue during that time, meaning that the kids are not there for us to serve and collect the reimbursement. So I'm very, very cautious of that because one tropical storm, again, one hurricane, can set us back up to $8 million.
I just have to make a point order real quick. This is really important to your question. The 36 million is a maximum fund balance. We're confusing accounting issues. Normally, we're used to talking to CFO about, we can't go below 3% on a fund balance. This is a maximum fund balance. You cannot carry more than 36 million.
But I think you also can't, there's a minimum also. I think the wording is off because they have to have three months of...
No, that's, I'm trying to clarify this, just so you understand the fact. The fact is USDA says you cannot carry more than three months. Otherwise, you're noncompliant. So it's a max balance.
Correct.
The min balance Ms. Mulder's talking about is, hey, in an emergency, it's about $8 million to kind of deal. I get that. But we have to stay between 8 and 36 million, according to what you're recommending and what the USDA allows. I just want everyone to understand the facts, okay? Thanks.
Okay. So my, my question is, based on staying in the rules, how, what is the maximum amount of money can FNS count afford to pay for extra lunches?
Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Mulder.
Based on the numbers today, not what if, you know, we have a hurricane or anything else.
So Food and Nutrition Services has that 36 million. If we look at the board agenda item that's up before the board right now for the 113,500, 113,500, can the food service account handle that? That's a small number for our balance. Yes, we can handle that amount.
That's not my question. My question is, what is the maximum amount of money can Food and Nutrition Services handle to pay?
Well, the expenses are running about 11 to 12 million a month. So depending on how much you want the department to carry, can we deplete the, the balance? And can we deplete the balance? That's always an option. But if the balance in the food service department budget is depleted, then the board is going to have to step in and assist with salaries, insurance.
So let me, let me help you, Ms. Mulder. And if it's zero, it's zero. If it's, so I think the question is, after you've balanced out your budget, you know this is what you have to carry for your fund balance year after year, in addition to all of that, do you, does the Food and Nutrition Service budget, how much money or do you guys have that you can actually pay for meals year after year, additional meals besides, in addition to everything that we're doing?
So it eventually would be depleted if we continue to do that.
So it's zero. So the answer is zero.
Right. We, we would deplete the fund balance.
Ms. Paul, did you want to add something?
I, I think that we don't, number one, a lot of the, what we get reimbursed depends on the kids that sign up or the parents that sign up for free and reduced lunch and the application process. So we don't have that number yet. I, I think we can't go pro, go back to 2019 numbers because we've lost kids since then. So at this point, we really don't have that number in terms of what's the maximum that we can pay out of the budget. What Ms. Mulder said previously, that the amounts we're talking about here, we could more than likely, without a doubt, absorb that cost. But I think that we just, at this point, don't have all the information we need. But if we're talking about the BB item that's on, 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 before the board right now, yes, we can cover that.
Okay. So I think that we need to do more. This isn't enough money. I mean, we're talking about, at the elementary school, 167 lunches. You know, that could be done in one day. So I think, I think it's fine to approve even the motion to increase it. It's fine, but we need a better plan. This is maybe first little baby step, but we need to have a more robust plan. We need to be talking with the companies that we do business with and asking them to donate to the lunches or partner with a school. We need to look at the alternative meal and how we make that a turkey sandwich and what that cost would be. We need to make sure that the FNS account, you know, that, that you really work through those numbers to see what you, you really can afford to pay. And maybe that is more money when you figure everything out and you get all your numbers, and then you come back to the board and be like, no, we can really do 5,000 a month or, or a year. So there's more that we can do. I think this is just the first step in, in this, this process. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Severa, and just because it's kind of gone all over, we, we have to vote on the amendment before we can finish up. So is your question specifically on the amendment or overall?
It's specifically on the amendment, and it's an easy one. Not sure. I believe, Dr. Holness, when, when you were initially explaining this, and I'm just asking for a very small point of clarification, I, I believe you had suggested that as far as the $500 allotment, if one school wasn't using it, perhaps we can shift to another school maybe had a greater need? And if you didn't suggest that, I don't know if that's, maybe that's something to be considered, but my question is, if, if school A is using, is not using the $500, and school B has already depleted their $500, is there an avenue in which school B can take some of the funds from school A to make up as opposed to just having the superintendent reimburse, 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 reimburse?
Dr. Hepburn.
Yes, that's from the BB item, the original one. After discussion, that, that was my understanding, is their flexibility as we monitor the use of the funds by the school. If we see a school that's completely not using it at all or using a very small portion, we would move money to schools that actually have a greater need.
Okay, so that was incorporated into your proposed motion?
In the original.
That was in Board Member Thompson's original motion. My motion is simply to have increments of 500 on an as-needed basis for specific schools.
Thank you for the clarification.
Is it specifically on the amendment? Because you're, okay. Okay.
Okay. I'm not sure if this is exactly, so you guys can stop me. We're working with a lot of unknowns right now because we're bringing this back after many years of not having done this. And so I'm wondering, I, I know that the item, the original item says that we'll come back in January to evaluate, but perhaps we just need to reevaluate this earlier, once we have more of the data so that we know. So we approved something today that will take us until we've come
Yes.
back with more information. We're missing a lot of information. Everyone's asking really good questions about, like, how we're going to solve this problem. And I'm very happy that Ms. Thompson brought this because I think this is a major pressing issue for the district, and obviously, everyone's invested in making sure that we're going to resolve it properly. So can we, I, I mean, how long would it take for us to have sufficient data to understand what real financial impact that we need to cover?
So, great question. So, great question. If, if I may, then I'll, I'll segue over to you guys. Great question. So I, as we were saying before, I just don't think we have enough data to make the decisions based on the questions that the board is asking. We can, we can provide a report based on the data, number one, after the first 30 days, after, um, you know, it's a 30-day window of all kids being fed and making sure that their parents and families are filling out the, the, um, the documents. So we can provide data after the first 30 days about how many students are eligible for free and reduced lunch and how many are not. After the next 15 days, so that's 45 days into the school year, we can provide information based on the information we collect from principals, how many kids that were not eligible for free and reduced lunch are actually asking for a meal, because they can't afford it. And we can provide additional data, 15- to 30-day increments, until we find the right set of data to make the decisions and answer the questions that the board is asking. We just don't have all the information that we need today, because we're reverting back to a previous system from five-plus years ago, and reverting back, and it's kind of still new. It's, times have changed, requirements have changed, socioeconomic status have changed and all of that. So if we can bring back the information in 30, 45-day, in 60-day increments, I think we will be able to answer the questions and have a better path forward to how we move as a district. And our budget will be fully finalized, and we can make some real decisions based off of what the budget looks like too.
Well, so that's my next question. So how does that impact our budget? Once we've set the budget, if we find, you know, this is going to take $112,000, I think, the way that it's currently proposed, and then it would obviously be more if we approved the amendment. But how, once we finalize the budget, what kind of wiggle room do we have to adjust? I mean, should we be looking at providing more when we finalize the budget? And having that available to us as needed? Or how, how does that-
It'll be based after we finalize the budget, because we have a, a lot of specific needs and a lot of shortfalls that we have to address. And then that gives also the FNS team opportunity to look at their own budget too. So it's going to be a combination of the two, looking at FNS budget and their forecasting, based on the data that we're receiving after the 30, 45, and 60-day window, and also our, our own general budget.
But we don't want to be in a situation where we're waiting for another three months to really get the data, and we've already, are we, the budget will already have been finalized by then? No? Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not backed into a corner, so that our timing is not aligned where we find out that we have this huge need that we didn't anticipate, which I suspect will be the case, you know, based on the cost of living and just the fact that people aren't used to doing this anymore. And that we didn't provide enough for our, for this particular item.
And we will, we're monitoring the applications and all that right now. We'll continue to. And we can talk to our, our other school districts in the state that have already transitioned. I think we got a couple that's already transitioned back to this after a year or two of implementation, after exhausting their, their ESF funds or ARC monies, and then we can, we can follow up. But I, I, right now, we don't have the, the best data possible to make the best decision moving forward.
So, if that's the case, then how do we make-
I think this is a good start.
Okay, so we make a start, and then-
This is a great start.
We'll continue to pursue this, and, okay, so we're not locked in, and this is the only thing we're going to be able to-
Correct. We'll bring back the data to do what we need to do moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I, um, I'm going to speak, and then we're, we're going to take a vote for the amendment. So I, I agree with Dr. Zeeman in terms of not, we can't say 500 increments as it's needed, because we're agreeing to 112, maybe 200,000. But what happens if 1,000 kids a day need that, and we end up with $1 million by January? Like, I just think that the idea of that is too much. So I like the idea of bringing it back to us in 45 days. And my suggestion is, in a workshop setting where you can give us all the data, here's what the FNS can pay, here's what we found with students who need it, so that we can have a holistic look at what it is and figure out where that sits in our budget. Or we can also say, well, we've reached out to these business partners, and they're willing to give, you know, this much. Maybe, you know, some of the people, the big people in our district might be willing to do that. I know there's a couple of big nonprofits that are really focused on food and making sure our students have it. In fact, they've shifted to do that, and, and even Publix, for example. They will only give grants now to make sure that students are, are being fed. So maybe there's other places. So on a workshop, after those 45 days, if you come back with all those pieces of information, we can make a better plan. But I think the original was starting with 500, at least, is something to start with. So as much as I appreciate the amendment, I think it's better to just stay with the actual item, which also includes high schools. So I think it's really important that we do get that across the finish line here today, to make sure that our high school students are afforded the same thing as our elementary and middle school students. So we are going to take a vote on the amendment, and then we can come back to the item. So all those in favor of the amendment to allow the superintendent to increase, as necessary, $500 up through January, based on this item, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
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 Can we take a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Roll call on the motion. School Board Members, Alhadev.
No.
Bowman.
No, because we're bringing it back.
Severa. That was a no? Hickson.
No.
Holness.
Yes.
Leonardo.
Yes.
Rupert.
No.
Thompson. Zeeman.
No.
It fails 3-6.
Okay, so back to the original item. Is there anybody who still needs to have anything to say? Dr. Zeeman?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to ensure, as part of this, that alternate meals are provided at high schools.
Second. Great idea.
Any public comment on the motion?
Natalie Lynch Walsh, Plantation, Florida. I support the motion, but one of the laws at the federal level is that there should not be any distinguishable difference between kids who have paid for their meals and kids who haven't. So that's, it's important to make sure that it doesn't stick out. And getting away from a cheese sandwich, and I don't know what a jelly sandwich is, I thought it was a PBJ. So they have to come up with a way, so that it is not obvious, and that's in federal law, that the kids getting the alternate meal are getting an alternate meal. But I support the motion.
Support the motion. I think it's important to consider that, obviously, it can't be any difference between the meals. And you got to get away from the stigma. But the kids are creative. If they see someone with a cheese sandwich or a turkey sandwich, they're going to know. And so many of these kids are not going to ask for the alternative meal because of that. They don't want to be bullied. So, let's think about the whole picture here. There might be kids who won't go to the principal. They might not ask for the meal, because they don't want to be seen with it. And there will be a difference. Someone is going to see the turkey sandwich or the cheese sandwich. So, I'm really stressing the importance of finding some way in the budget to make it universal and doing, doing it quickly. If you have to partner with the private sector, look at your vendors and say, hey, why is the meal costing $2 or $3 a meal? You know, for these little pizza sandwiches, maybe they should be a dollar a meal, if we can bring the cost down and work out, you know, some type of deal with your vendors. I would suggest that too.
Thank you. Next public speaker.
Felicia Schumer-Luker, Coconut Creek, Florida. We have a upcoming item on the agenda where we're going to try to get, I don't know if the vote, the vote going to be yes or no. But we're trying to get produce from Mac and Growth Company, which is a produce company. And if anything, we shouldn't be getting money from the general funding, because we already in, you know, in debt, you know, pulling from that account. But if we get that produce, and then we do find another alternative way to get some funding, we could get some bread and some meat that go in a sandwich and feed those kids. We can find a way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Board Member discussion. Dr. Holness?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Dr. Hepburn, I am looking forward to the information coming back in an expedited manner, because I, I think that, as many have mentioned, the $500 may be exhausted rather quickly. And in the spirit of saving money, we can't do that at the expense of kids going hungry. So I, I don't think that's, we're, we're off to a good step, but it's, there's still that same concern. And while Board Member Thompson's motion starts to address the issue, when those funds get exhausted in a week or two or three weeks, or however long, I don't know, based on the data that you're coming back, depending on how long you take to bring that data back and that information, we could have kids going hungry. So I, I am disappointed that it, that we didn't pass the prior motion. But I'm also concerned, moving ahead now that it's not passed, that kids may be going hungry. Because as Dr. Zeeman mentioned, 500 is nothing. It's going to be exhausted. So getting that data back is important, and I know we're all trying to save money. But when you have a kid at a school going hungry, trying to save money, that's not the decision we want to make.
Dr. Holness, this was specifically on Dr. Zeeman's motion about adding alternative lunches for high school. That's what we're on right now.
Okay, I thought we were.
No, no.
Not yet?
No, we haven't.
But thank you.
Because he made a motion. We were, and then he made a motion, so now we're on his motion.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion of including high schools' students to have alternative lunches on this item, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Chair, I have another motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to motion that the funds for this item be pulled from the FNS account, not from the general fund.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved, the second to include that the funds, the $500 per school come out of the FNS funds, not general fund. Any public comment?
Natalie Lynch Walsh, Plantation, Florida. I don't know if you got a clear-cut answer on whether you could do that legally. However, there were items on today's agenda where I questioned whether kids would benefit. It's kind of hard to worry about things like software packages when you're hungry. You're too hungry to focus on, I think it was OO21, and I'm guessing that came out of the general fund. So if you can do it legally, sure, but if you can't, that shouldn't stop you funding it appropriately. Because I can always take any of these agendas and probably cut at least a couple million in wasteful spending. Because you spent, on Prisms of Reality, 864, 860 today. Don't know what it is, but if you're too hungry to focus, it won't really matter.
Any other public comment? Board Member discussion? Mr. Severa?
Madam Chair, is what Mr. Zeeman is proposing legal?
Ms. Batista?
So it sounds from the previous answer that you received from Mrs. Mulder, that it, it is legal, that, but she's not sure about whether she would have enough monies to sustain, if that's, you know, in the long term, if it's over the $500.
Right, I believe that Ms. Paul and the CFO all shook their head that they could cover the 112 that it'll cost.
Yep.
Mrs. Alhadev?
Ms. Batista, is your legal opinion that this is legal? Your legal opinion, Ms. Batista?
Yes.
Thank you.
Lawyers love that question.
Anybody else? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Are we ready to vote on the item? Oh, Mrs. Alhadev?
Yes, I just want to go back to this alternative meal. My question is, is it by statute called alternative meal? Is this a BCPS thing that we're calling an alternative meal? Because I think it needs to change the narrative, the stigma attached to this alternative meal. I would like the superintendent to come back with some better ideas. Because universally, in all of our schools, the, I'll call it courtesy meal, needs to be delivered with fidelity, meaning everyone gets a tray. They're getting their milk, they're getting their fruit, they're getting their sandwich. And not just someone, you know, thrown a cheese sandwich, and, and then there's this stigma created around it.
Dr. Hepburn?
Let us know that we'll bring, bring that information back.
And I will be going to schools and asking for the courtesy meal.
I know.
I think that's actually a great name, courtesy meal.
It is.
But I will pay for my courtesy meal.
Mrs. Bowman?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to make sure, because I, you know, just, we've been here, this is the second time we're discussing this in our meetings. And Ms. Mulder and Ms. Johnson have clarified, you know, the situation, funding, why we're in this position right now. But I, being in the community, I don't know that we've done an adequate job of explaining that to the stakeholders. I think that we're definitely advertising the need to apply for free and reduced lunch. But is there a way that we can put out concise and easy-to-understand messaging from the school district of why we are reverting back to the, having to pay for the lunches? Because my impression from kind of feedback is that a lot of people believe that this is something that we're imposing upon them. And obviously, that's not the case. Situations have changed. But I think that it's really important that we're communicating properly to our stakeholders why this is happening. And I think that will allow us to also engage more with the community and community partners, so that they understand the situation we're in, and it's not something that we're doing independently and because we thought we, this was a great idea.
Yes, absolutely. We can work with the Food and Nutrition Team, with the Communication Team, to put something simple together. And also work with our media outlets, isn't that right, Ari? And also, I'm pretty sure Mr. Travis is listening, to work with our media outlets to get that information out.
Thank you. We would appreciate that, media outlets.
Okay, I, just based on what Mrs. Alhadev said, I'd like to make one last motion, and then we can vote on the whole thing. I'd like to move to change the name everywhere throughout from alternative meal to courtesy meal. Thank you. Any public comment? Great. Any Board Member comment? Excellent. All those, oh, go ahead.
I, I'd love that idea, but we just asked the superintendent to bring us some ideas. And he was going to go do some research and come back and give us a menu, bet, another good pun today, about options. So why are, what's, what's the value of diving into one of those options when we just asked the superintendent to bring us a menu of options?
We can change it later. I just think, moving forward, starting school, to call it courtesy now as opposed to alternate, we, we want to take the stigma away. Why do we have to wait? We, if he brings us something better, we can change it again.
Hey, if you like it, I love it.
Do you?
Yeah. We can go ahead and start messaging to our principals right now.
Yeah, amen. To Ms. Alhadev's question, though, this is something that's within Broward's domain to, to name whatever we call that meal.
That's, Ms. Mulder, is that correct? Yes, so we can change the name?
Wonderful.
Yep.
Courtesy.
Right.
Just, just really, really quickly. So you can, Broward can call it whatever Broward wants to call it, but there's a specific definition, you know, to the term alternative meals under pursuant to the Florida statute, that is not only for reduced lunch, reduced money, but also kosher meals and so on are also are alternative, called alternative meals. So there is a specific definition for that term.
Okay, so, well, those would be truly alternative meals, because kosher would be alternative. These are specifically courtesy meals.
And courtesy meals, in your definition, are the meals that people get when they can't pay.
They can't pay for the-
Perfect. Love it.
Right. Okay, all those in favor of calling it courtesy meal, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. So to the item itself, BB1, all those in favor, as amended, so the, the three amendments were to add high school for the courtesy meal, to change the funding from FNS, and to call it courtesy meal as opposed to alternative meal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. We pass it unanimously. We pass it unanimously.
Nice job. Ms. Thompson?
Okay. So, the next item is... Well, we have five minutes, so let's try to squeeze out another item. The next item is AA2. Can I have a motion in a second?
It's a move.
It's been moved by Dr. Zeeman, seconded by Ms. Bowman. Any public comment on AA2?
No comments.
Okay. Mrs. Bowman?
I don't have any questions on this.
All right. Mrs. Alhada?
I just wanted to make sure the mental health referendum funding was all spent.
Dr. Hepburn?
Yes, fully exhausted, and in some scenarios, over-exhausted and encroaching on other funds.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson?
Yep.
Yes.
Mental health assistance allocation.
I mean, my comments are gonna be longer than five minutes, but, okay.
We only give five minutes.
All right. So, to the superintendent, I would like to know how much of these programs are done virtually versus in person?
Dr. Hepburn?
Ms. Hollisworth?
Good afternoon. Simone Hollingsworth, Chief Student Services Officer. I'm gonna have Ms. Vernika Winter, our Director of Mental Health, come up just to go through and give you a one-by-one.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the question. There are a portion of services provided by Broward Behavioral Health Coalition that allows for telehealth for their therapy sessions in addition to face-to-face. As far as some of the other programs, Rethink Ed is used within the school building to do our lessons for resiliency, life skills, and wellness. But Inner Explorer is something that is accessible both in school as well as out of the building for families and for students to be able to access virtually.
Sorry to interrupt, but my understanding of Rethink Ed, even though it's done in the building, it is a virtual online program. So, could you please go back through those programs and say which one? I don't care where they're taking it, but are they in front of a screen getting this information? Or is there a real person teaching them?
So, Rethink Ed would be virtual? Inner Explorer is virtual? That... I believe from the list that we've identified, those are the only virtual platforms that I can readily identify at the moment.
Thank you. And is it true the majority... From talking to students, it sounds like Rethink Ed is truly where people are getting their information from. Would you say that's accurate?
Rethink Ed is the platform used for our required instruction per the state for resiliency education lessons in addition to our life skills and wellness lessons, correct?
So, it's state statute that we have to use this programming?
No. It's not particularly that particular program, but it is an approved curriculum to be used for that purpose. And the Rethink lessons incorporate a component of online instruction as well as face-to-face discussions that are led by the adult in the room.
Are there curriculums in the state of Florida that are led by the adult in the room that are approved through state statute?
We would be able to explore specifically. I wouldn't be able to name them at the moment.
That's fine.
But there's a variety available that are approved.
Yes. And a follow-up, then, I think, other alternatives because we're paying $200,000, and I get that that's gonna be less than paying a staff person or a salary, but I think mental health is best delivered by a human being in the classroom than watching cartoons or whatever. I also had a question on how we're measuring the effectiveness of the youth mental health first aid. I'm a big proponent of the program. However, are we asking adults who've taken it afterwards if it's helpful? Are we getting any anecdotal reports back? Because we say it's effective, but then there's no... There's nothing that shows how we know it's effective.
So, the youth mental health first aid curriculum and training is identified by the state as to what's used for that platform. But you must have been sitting in some of our team meetings because those anecdotal surveys are scheduled to actually go out for the first time this coming school year so that we can start collecting real application from those individuals that have completed our training over the last year, two years, three years, to be able to have some idea of how they're applying it within the school building.
Perfect. That's excellent. Because like I said, I do think it's a very effective and very general knowledge so that everyone feels somewhat equipped to deal with a crisis or at least manage it until they can get it to a professional. And then, Y Try. How many... So, this is the first time I've ever heard of that program. How many group sessions are actually being implemented in our school system? And how are we tracking that?
I'm gonna bring up Ms. Sotelo, whose team works primarily with the Y Try.
Hi.
Good afternoon, boards. Marissa Sotelo, Director of Student Services. The Y Try curriculum has been utilized in the school social work program, in my department, anyway, for a number of years. Even, we've had pauses and then we've gone back to it because it's a very practical tool. I don't know if they necessarily use them in groups, but they're used more for individual support and counseling.
Hi. Thank you. And then my last comment, just to my colleagues, is I truly believe we need to be using our mental health allocation and our referendum money for mental health on real individuals in our classroom. I think that's how we deliver the best support for our students. And when we spend it on other services, our virtual programming, we're not doing the best supportive services for our students. Also, I just want to point out our ratios. And I know Superintendent Hepburn has talked about our school counseling ratio before, but the recommended ratio is for every 250 students, there is one school counselor. The national average is 376 students per one counselor. We are at 458 for school social workers. Again, the recommended ratio is one social worker for every 250 students. We are currently at one social worker for every 1,390 students. In my mind, that is completely unacceptable. As a school social worker, I understand that... That there's no way I could service every student in my four schools in any amount of hours that I worked. We really need to think through the process of how we are supporting our students in a real-person capacity. The same with school psychologists. The recommended ratio is one to every 500, and ours is one to every 1,672 students. Again, this is very alarming. I know we're gonna be discussing funding and staffing, and I know there's a shortage. However, when we're talking about mental health and what's best for our students, I really want us to focus on getting actual providers in the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Zeeman?
Thank you. There's no doubt the future of healthcare is a blend of live and virtual assets. There is a bevy of evidence that virtual counseling is actually more effective and more efficient than live counselors. So, we have to be careful about bringing, you know, opinions and thoughts about things and look hard at the evidence. I've met with the mental health team a number of times. I'm very, very comfortable with the strategy that they have in place. And as Ms. Thompson pointed out, we still aren't spending enough money to kind of deal with the mental health crisis. This is related to the cell phone issue that we'll be talking about next week. Again, a mountain of evidence that say cell phones do not belong in K-12 schools. And so, we will talk about that next week. But the mental health future is really a blend of live and virtual responses. And just to make that point crystal clear, what's the biggest advantage of a virtual counselor? They're available when you are. And so, you don't have to drive to downtown Plantation to get an appointment with a live counselor and drive back. And then, after a while, people stop going because it's a drive there and a drive back and things like that. There's plenty of room for that for some people, but virtual counseling can be more accessible. My question about this, Chair, though, is about accessibility. We say on Section 2, there's no page numbers on this, on Section 2, under School Board Policies, I think we're saying something that is not our policy. School-based mental health services are initiated within 15 calendar days of identification and assessment. Community-based mental health services are initiated within 30 calendar days of referral. Chair, are those our standards for delivery of mental health in Broward County Public Schools?
Dr. Hepburn?
I know those are not our current standards, but I'll let Ms. Winter, or Dr. Winter, come up and then expound.
So, those dates are actually identified by the state as required. And so, our agreement with the Broward Behavioral Health Coalition is how we ensure that we stay within those timeframes. So, the 15 and 30 days is actually a state timeframe that's provided, and we are obligated to ensure that we are remaining within that timeframe. And that's how we monitor it by our third-party referrals through BBHC.
Terrific. And I'm just gonna ask this question again because I really mean the question I'm asking. I'm comfortable that the state have a standard of 15 and 30. What I asked and what I want to know, and what the community wants to know, is what is Broward County Public School standard for initiating, for school-based mental health services being initiated? And for community-based mental health services being provided to people who raise their hand and say, "I need help"? Is it 15 and 30 days? Is that our standard in Broward County Public Schools?
We obviously want to make sure that we stay within the guidelines identified by the state, but ideally, we want to expedite that as quickly as possible. So, we do everything that we can to ensure that as soon as the need is identified, that we can ensure that the paperwork is provided to the parents for their consent, and then that we follow the process in place for them to be screened and connected with a provider. So, we'll continue to expedite that as much as we can.
And I'm not picking on you, okay? But what does the M stand for in SMART goals?
Measurable.
Right. What you just said is a big word salad, and I appreciate that. But that can't be our standard, or we're never gonna get there. We've got to say that our standard is if someone raises their hand and says they need help, they get help. Did you hear the students that they brought in and talked about mental health?
Absolutely.
How could we be a bureaucrat on this and say 15 and 30 days is okay? We just had 16 kids come in here and say, "I know, or I did, need mental help, and I couldn't get anybody. I didn't even know where to go in my school." So, if we're gonna do the bureaucratic answers and say, "This is what the state standard is", I'm not interested in that. Broward County has to do better than state standards. Chair, to the general...
Let me help you out there, Dr. Zeeman. As I heard, I gleaned some information in her response. The answer is when a kid raises their hand, we immediately respond to the need.
Awesome. That's terrific. And we, as Ms. Thompson pointed out, don't have the resources to respond perfectly. We are budget limited. But we should still have a goal that means something. And if the goal, as the superintendent has pointed out, if you raise your hand, we respond there, I mean, that's great. At the end of the day, though, the response can't just be, "Thank you for submitting your form", right? That doesn't help somebody. What helps them is when they get real help. And so, I hope that we think about what a goal should be for mental health in Broward County Public Schools. If we don't measure... If we don't have a measurable goal, then there's no way we can add staff, add money for other capabilities, make sure that we have great communications to our students, so they know where to turn, make sure everyone understands their roles and responsibilities, and make sure, in particular, the sensor grid that we have for mental health, which are called teachers, know what to look for and know who to refer people to. And so, I know that system is being worked, and I appreciate it, but I hope that Dr. Hepburn's goal becomes the measurable goal, which is if you raise your hand, not only is there response, but there is care provided to you in as fast as amount of time as possible, but not because the state says it's 15 and 30 days. We will lose students if that's our response rate.
So, I just want to echo, again, Dr. Hepburn's sentiments that in terms of our own staff, it's immediate. If a student raises their hand to say that they are in need of mental health support, our expectation is that they are immediately connected with the mental health professionals to provide that support. The 15 to 30 days is referring to when students are outsourced with community agencies and have to go through another layer of assessment and parental paperwork to be completed for those assessments, and then further services. So, again, we will continue to expedite that as much as we possibly can for those third-party referrals, but do everything that's within our power to ensure that every single student within Broward County Public Schools is immediately connected to a mental health professional and is provided those supports until they are able to be connected to any extended services that may be necessary if deemed so.
Terrific. And the last thing is just a question for the superintendent. How many resources do we need to meet that goal?
Dr. Hepburn?
It's a, for the record, question. I know that that's gonna be a number we can't afford, but we need to know what that number is so we have our requirement established. And then, at least, we can keep working, as Ms. Thompson pointed out, to more psychologists, more counselors, more social workers. But if we knew that number of how many resources of what type we need in order to meet the goal you just articulately shared with us, that'll tell us at least what we need to get to.
So, I can tell you... I can't give you the exact number. I can definitely follow up. That's a great question. We need above and beyond the resources that we have. Thanks to the taxpayers for what they voted for with referendum to provide additional mental health support. So, I definitely want to thank our taxpayers for that. And we're reviewing staffing allocations, and we'll be implementing a new staffing allocation. But we can give you what that... The perfect allocation would look like and how much it would cost, which is beyond...
Yes, sir.
...the funds that Broward County Public Schools receives.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Leonardi?
I have something to say. I just want to briefly echo Ms. Thompson's comments regarding virtual... Our virtual menu for mental health. I think we heard from the students several months ago, but I also, you know, heard from student advisors yesterday that students are really wanting, like, a human being in front of them, talking to them about these things. So, to the extent that we can emphasize that and push that in our schools would be really great. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll close this out before we vote on it. I... We already did public speaker. Yeah. We did public speaking on this already. No public speaking? No. We already... We do that ahead of time. So, I think it might be a good idea to look at putting what Dr. Zeeman said and Ms. Thompson kind of together. I think the virtual programming is not really what the students want. They want a person, but I don't think they would mind having a virtual person. Like, we have virtual healthcare in our schools. So, maybe there's a way to pivot some of the money instead of having virtual programs where they're going through and answering questions and stuff. We could figure out a way to provide those virtual actual providers to make sure that students have someone in front of them. And I think in the world they live in, it doesn't matter if they're sitting face-to-face or if they're through a computer because that's the world they live in. So, maybe we could look at that moving forward. And also, just like to suggest, I've said this a number of times, to start providing trauma training for our teachers. I know that there are places that provide that for free for our teachers. So, maybe in that collection of lab courses that we start to provide for our teachers or professional development, start to add that because, as Dr. Zeeman alluded to earlier, our students are the first line of defense on this particular issue with our students. And the more we can help them to identify trauma because you do have to address trauma much differently than you address other things. It's a different kind of counseling. And I think it would be really helpful for our teachers and even for behavioral so that they could identify it, and maybe they even address a student differently and then de-escalate something because they understand it's a trauma response to something. So, that would just be my comments. All those in favor of item AA2, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. It's unanimous minus Ms. Thompson because she's not on the dais. Thank you so much. Okay. Board members, I am advised that the General Counsel would like to request an attorney-client session. At this time, I am requesting all persons not scheduled to attend the attorney-client session. Please exit the room at this time. Ms. Batista?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to request the School Board convene an attorney-client session in order to discuss pending litigation before the 17th Judicial Circuit in and for Broward County, Florida, in the following matter. Mark Mesa versus the School Board of Broward County, Florida, case number 17-006297. The following persons will attend this attorney-client session. School Board members, Deborah Hickson, Chair, Lori Alhadev, Maura McCarthy, Bowman, Adam Cervera, Esquire, Dr. Jeff Holness, Rebecca Thompson, Dr. Alan Zeeman, Dr. Howard Hepburn, Superintendent of Schools, John Michael Kendrick, Esquire, Thomas Seacuny, Esquire, and Marilyn C. Batista, Esquire, BCS. In anticipation of this request, the attorney-client session was properly advertised for today, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, at twelve forty-five PM in accordance with section two eighty-six point zero one one, parentheses eight, of the Florida statutes. The purpose of the attorney-client session is to discuss settlement negotiations and our strategy relative to the pending litigation. A certified court reporter will record the session, and only those persons noted in the advertisement will be permitted to attend. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome back to this regular school board meeting. Our next item on the agenda is item double D1. Can I have a motion in a second on item double D1? It's been moved by Dr. Zeeman, seconded by Mrs. Alhadev. Oh, our clerk.
Whoops.
It's okay, I'll take the minutes.
Okay, perfect. The motion's been made by Dr. Zeeman, seconded by Mrs. Alhadev. Do we have any public comment?
No ma'am.
Board discussion, Mrs. Bullman.
Thank you Chair. So, just a quick question is when we're looking at the audit plan for the coming year, do we have any flexibility, like if something comes up that is, you know, that the board or staff...
Welcome back to this regular school board meeting. Our next item on the agenda is item double D1. Can I have a motion in a second on item double D1? It's been moved by Dr. Zeeman, seconded by Mrs. Alhadev. Oh, our clerk.
Whoops.
It's okay, I'll take the minutes.
Okay, perfect. Motion's been made by Dr. Zeeman, seconded by Mrs. Alhadev. Do we have any public comment?
No ma'am.
Board discussion, Mrs. Bullman.
Hey, thank you, Chair. So, just a quick question is when we're looking at the audit plan for the coming year, do we have any flexibility, like if something comes up that is, you know, that the board or staff identify as being like a systematic issue or a need, is there the capacity to add to the audit plan or is this fixed for the year?
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, we do. Thank you for that question. We have on line item 18 of the audit plan on page 17. There is an area there that was established last year for a 10% contingency that would allow us to add an audit in there and frankly, it's a rarity that the entire audit plan gets completed in any given year just because of investigations and things of that nature that pop up. So, we could take that same funding for an existing audit that's planned on here and we could pop in something else that the board would prefer that becomes more of a priority. So, there's flexibility with that. All the board has to do is just like approve that and if that's a request or if that's something even that I would bring to you requesting that we do that as a higher priority, that could be done.
Okay, that's great and I think we might all appreciate if you do see things that you think we need to supplement with that you bring that to us.
Indeed.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Zeeman.
Thanks so much, Chair. This presentation of the audit plan looks a lot like last year's presentation. It's a little bit alarming to me that it's such a virtual repeat. I think the K-12 world is changing. More importantly to me though, if I'm correct, Chief Auditor, didn't we discuss this at a May workshop?
Yes, we did.
And I remember Vice Chair Leonardi was presiding at the time as the Chair and there was some consensus gained formally to ask you to respond to some direct questions. Those questions, and I'll just read from the transcript. There was a discussion about risk and about whether the school board members should be involved in the calculation of risk. But then I felt at that time, and so I said and gained consensus on is that there was some opportunities to do more operational audits and to make sure that we were looking at things. And I gave four specific examples of things that we could do and that other districts do besides property inventory and spend authority at schools and the like. One of them was ESE reimbursements, you know, an area in which we may be leaking millions of dollars. I asked and I pointed out, and again, I'm reading from the transcript, that there's a lot of accounting in that. It's a perfect area for an audit to make sure that either the rumors are wrong and we're not losing millions of dollars or in fact they're true. There was also the opportunity at that time to talk about a mental health audit and I outlined kind of some of the reasons why a strategy with measurable inputs and measurable outcomes would be something that an audit would live with. And then I asked, the fourth thing was about food services. I pointed out at the time that while the quality of the food is generally very good, there's some real opportunities to deliver food in a new and different way, either at the same price or less, that would expand the percentage of students that actually take lunch from us. In Broward County, our take rate for school lunches is pretty low compared to other urban districts and that may be a pretty good data about the quality of food. At that May workshop, you committed to responding to those things. I haven't gotten any responses to those things and I don't see them in the audit plan. While the board gave you consensus about those things, I'm wondering why those weren't responded to and why they're not in the audit plan.
So, to start with, there was an additional item that you mentioned, which was a campus environmental safety reporting audit. And as I started to look at some of the things that we look at and behavioral threat management and discipline, we had, as well as the idea of looking at the referendum money as one of the items that got put in to the audit plan, we found, I found that there was some duplication of some of those determinations that we would make where that's concerned. And regarding this campus environmental safety reporting, there's a lot of duplication in that in an audit that's already in the book for safety and security. So, the idea was try to not duplicate the efforts and spend money on something that was already being looked at in the scope of another audit within this. So, I do agree with you that ESE and food services is worth a look and as I said before, I do take input from board members, just similar to what had happened during today's meeting when we were talking about mental health. There have been a lot of discussion at workshops and board meetings about mental health matters and how important that is, as well as various safety and security items and also monitoring of the funds that have to do with whether or not we would want to go with food services funding or general fund funding. These are conversations that I'm constantly utilizing and grabbing notes and grabbing information, doing those risk assessments as well. I'm capturing information from the board as well as, as I said before, and I don't think that it landed very well, but the risk assessment that was done last year, it incorporated the input from various board members, yourself included, and that was a three-year risk assessment. Now, I agree with you that things change as we go along, as well as with the delay in getting our external resources available to us last year, which I think at one point you characterized it more as, I was trying to say that this was a board issue that created this. That's not the case at all. It was a combination of procurement and then legal review for sufficiency and the fact that we had some problems along the way with someone who was one of the firms that was ultimately requested to be removed even though they had already been deemed responsible and responsive to the bid. And they were an important group for us to have because we need all the resources that we can get. So, when, the way that that dovetails into the beginning of your comment is that the fact that this audit plan looks sufficiently similar in many ways to last year's audit plan is because we have audits that got going in the middle of the year that are still ongoing that have to be captured in here. So, just because we got it started late doesn't mean that it doesn't show up on an audit plan. It just means that it had to be carried over and we tried to make sure that we consistently identified that for the board members to review and see that that's a carryover item from last year's plan.
I want you to appreciate kind of the significance though of gaining consensus from this board. In your tour as a Chief Auditor, has this board gained consensus to ask you to do anything different with your audit plan other than the May workshop when we did that?
No.
So, I love the fact that you're hearing the conversation, cabinet conversation, superintendents' ideas, it's all meaningful inputs into how you construct an audit plan. But in this case, we specifically gained consensus about some ideas. You said you would respond to them. I haven't seen the response other than what I hope to be some kind of inclusion in the audit plan of the ideas that for which we gained consensus. I mean, we talked about it, we came up with the ideas, we got consensus. I understand one of those could be subsumed in one of the other audits. The other three are not present in the current audit plan, is that correct?
No, it's two and two.
Okay, two are subsumed and two not included.
So, the mental health aspect through behavioral threat, discipline, and then the CESR audit through the safety and security audit, which really looks at everything similar to our annual audits of safety and security.
Right.
Where they kind of come in and test everything from getting through the gate to getting through the school.
Sure. And having served with countless auditors in different boards over the past few decades, I'm very familiar with the cycle of going to the governing board, presenting ideas, getting feedback and then changing the plan, coming back, presenting for final approval. It seems like we're just not really following that to the letter. There's a need to make sure that the board owns the audit plan and feels comfortable with the risk assessment and what's included. I'm not going to ask you to recite any more answers to these things. I would just ask you to consider those other two ideas as board direction because that's, I think, literally what it is. And we do have 10% overlap. You've got a lot of catch-up to do because of the contracts issue you had last year. I'm very sympathetic to that. But I just would like you to consider those other two ideas because we did gain consensus on them and if they could be included in another or they can be added as part of the 10%, that'd be great. I'd like to go to a separate issue. Policy 1700 says if you want to add or amend, you sit down with our board chair and you say, Ms. Hickson, Chair, I'd like to do, you know, I've got, it seems like 70 audits in here. Number 71, I'd like to go do one on this other thing that came up. I've been listening to different people. It seems like a good idea. It's one of the few authorities that we vest in the chair who by state law has the same authorities that all of us have except where we make policies to give her special ones. And we give her the authority, her just being the chair, I won't talk about her personally, but the chair gets the authority to approve that. I'm curious, Chair, last year on the audit plan over the, since you've become Chair, have there been any requests to audit, to make amendments to the audit plan?
I can't recall off the top of my head, so I'll say no. I don't remember having a specific conversation.
Terrific. And I would just ask as a professional privilege, if in fact there's amendment to the audit plan made to you, would you please, whether you approve it or disapprove it, that's your authority, but whatever you do, could you communicate it to the rest of the board within a day or so or whatever makes sense?
Absolutely.
I really appreciate that. Thank you very much. That's all I really want to talk about. I think this function is so important for an organization as big as ours. You know, the ability to independently go out and look at things. But what you look at is just as important as how you look at it. And so, that's why I'm a stickler about the board direction, you know, on the audit plan. And I appreciate you bringing all of this to us in May, to the Audit Committee, I think in June, and now to us for final approval. I'm perfectly happy to approve it with this 10% contingency. I just, at some point, would like a response to what we asked you to respond to in May. And if you could, outside of this meeting, just let me know how those other two audits might fit into the plan.
And if I could, there's one short answer that I can give you and still follow up with what you just requested. At the time that you were mentioning this, you were referencing that the audit plans seemed to be light in the way of operational audits and that it could use some additional operational audits. So, I'd just like to call your attention to page 10 because where we had that pie chart that was also asked to be updated, we identified that we have currently 50% of our audit plan is operational audits. In fact, it's more than that, but I didn't drill into for purpose, specific purpose to which ones that are categorized as other, which are also some operational audits. So, we're really pretty operational audit heavy in this one. So, I wanted to make sure that we had enough coverage of areas over and above that so we could have compliance, we could have performance. Because we haven't looked at a contract in a long time and looking at performance of a contract, especially as we get to the point where there might be the opportunity to claw back some money in some of these bond program contracts, that would be one of the things that I would want to leave a little bit of opportunity to look at as well. And so, I just wanted to make that point for everybody to see that this page 10 replaced that old pie chart so we could be more, we could be more clear about what number of audits are in what areas that we would be auditing.
Yeah, and I appreciate the discussion. At the May workshop was kind of couched as operations, but it was really kind of a diversity of programs as well. So, we're not, you know, repeating the audits we've done in the past. Because one of the cool things about audits is if you get out and do different programs over time, people remember for like five or 10 years that you did an audit. And so, behavior oftentimes could be different where you've been auditing, but that means you've got to be moving around, looking at different programs or functions within operations. And so, I'm just going to continue to advocate for, you know, a turnover of audits every year that's more than 5%. Like, I really think if we turned over 20, 30% of audits per year and rotated it around to different areas, that we would be doing ourselves a favor. But thank you for your responses.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of item DD1 say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is DD3. Can I have a motion in a second?
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Zeeman, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Any public comment?
No ma'am.
Board discussion, Mrs. Bullman.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just looking for a little clarification on this. I've read the, I'm not sure what the title of it is, the internal audit report.
Are you talking about athletics and student?
Yes, athletics and specifically with the scholarship funds being commingled with other funds. So, it was alarming when I originally read it, but then in reviewing the responses, because it, in reviewing the responses, it says from the Business Support Center, it says that they had identified that issue and the process was revised effective September 14th, 2023. So, the audit report doesn't mention that at all. It just, was that what you found? Because it, I mean, obviously the fiscal year starts July 1st, but it looks like there might have been a two and a half month issue, but the issue was resolved well before you actually audited them.
Can you point me to the page that you're referring to so I can see?
Well, I guess it's page, so page 11 is the Business Support Center response, but it's in page, on page 12 under scholarships. It says that they revise, the process was revised effective September 14th, 2023.
Just give me a second so I can get back, get my head back into that finding.
Because the recommendation in the audit report is that they shouldn't commingle the funds, but it looks like by the time you audited them, they weren't not.
Say that, that last part?
Well, it says the recommendation in the audit report says they shouldn't commingle the funds, but the response indicates that by the time you were auditing them, they weren't commingling the funds.
So, what we had is a consistent condition that we found and that is that funds were commingled and it wasn't always clear which funds they were coming from to create a budget. And also, the recommendation was ultimately for Business Support Center to document proper procedures and reconcile prepayments and expenditures as a general finding. Because what was happening is that we have audits that go back to 2023, we have audits that go back to 2024 in this cycle because we're always looking back with these internal funds. And so, there are things that Business Support Center may have addressed and may have fixed before or before the audit was completed, but during, not while our audit field work was going on. And so, when you're talking about was something identified in the audit or was it not identified in the audit, if things had changed, that would be something that we would flesh out during the exit conference. And if they didn't have the documentation or we didn't have the documentation, we would have them put it into their response, even if they say that they disagreed with us because we could only go by what documentation we had at the time. In fact, there's one in here, I'm not certain if it's this report, I'll have to look and see, that we had a situation where there were financial reports that were supposed to be created after each fundraiser and those were supposed to be available for audit. And in several cases, they weren't, in other cases, they were, credit where credit's due. But in some cases, they weren't available for audit for us to be able to look at that. We got a response in one of them that said that the items, the documents were resent at a different date, but the fact is, is that they weren't sent to begin with to have been resent. They were shared and pointed out to how to mine those and gather those from a system during a training between the Office of the Chief Auditor and the BSC.
But when you're doing the audit, it's the year prior. So, in the, the subject of this audit is the fiscal year 2023, 24. So, that would have been July 1st, 23 to June 30th, 24. And they're saying that they've revised the process effective September 14th, 2023. But it doesn't mention that at all in your.
Let me look at that again. And you said that was in their response, that was on?
Yeah, that was in their response, the Business Support Center. Just to your point, giving credit where credit's due if the situation had been resolved.
I also have to apologize because my staff, who normally would be here to support me through this, both of them are gone today and they're the people that are in the weeds. I'm the one who's over and reviewing it after the fact. Hang on one second. I'm looking through the response and scanning for a, oh, okay, scholarships. Following the review of how the receipts.